Took it off me.
Yeah, took a roll call. We're all here. First item on the agenda is to acknowledge receipt of correspondence. And I have a Ayavani 413 letter and a Denny Hall 419 letter, both interest in the 48 task force. Anything else, Gail?
Wolski.
There were two municipal letters, one from Gloucester and one from Beverly, oh, Wenham, I believe. And there was also a letter from Mark Wolski. And all of that is in correspondence in the meeting packet. And on SharePoint.
And we had a letter from the town administrator.
Okay, and a letter from the town administrator. Thank you. At this time, I will allow any public comments with any items not on the agenda with a limited amount of time. Does anyone want to speak from the public? Okay, moving on. First item is the FEMA flood maps review. Betsy provided a link to the map numbers. And this is helpful in creating a floodplain zoning bylaw. And the maps are here before us. If anyone wanted to take a look at them, they were here, what, half hour ago or an hour ago? But.
Yeah, and we can, if somebody wants to come and look at them in Town Hall, we can do a sign out for some of the days that both Gail and I are in Town Hall. The, we received two copies, one copy we're hanging on to, and one copy was given to the Harvard Commission for their Harvard Plan. And there is a comment, a 90-day comment period, they did get back to me, and I reflected it in my staff memo, that we have until the end, the beginning of October to comment on them.
So my suggestions for how these comment, the process for comments, should we make them to you?
Probably.
Take the review?
Yeah.
Laura?
Just a logistical question. I tried the link, which does it get you to the FEMA portal, and then you select your county, Essex County, and then there are a number of maps that are identified just, well, all the maps are identified by number, not by town in the name.
So, yeah.
Is it possible to?
Now, it's kind of odd because the link that I put in when I did it took me right to the Manchester.
Oh, it did, okay. I used the preliminary download link in the staff letter.
No, it did, no, it did.
Yeah. Dan Mark.
Yeah, so I provided links in our meeting packet, which, which panels are appropriate for Manchester.
I think I put in meetings.
If you go to the comment in the grid in the, when you get to our meeting packet.
Okay.
You know, 434H, 0433, 0453, 0441.
That can show them. It's in the, in the SharePoint here, can we show it?
Sure.
Yeah, so I put it in the, the kind of like the comment.
It's in the comments, in the SharePoint.
In the SharePoint, in our meeting.
So, like, right here.
Because I had the same issue, I couldn't.
Oh, I didn't see the comment field in SharePoint, okay.
So, if you guys are looking at the SharePoint, in the comment, there's a comment field over here in the list of documents.
Do we want to put that on the town website or something to make it easier for people to search?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to sit down with Tiffany and go over this because I want to make them available to the public. And if people have comments, they can comment on the website and then I can collect those comments from Tiffany.
Do we know what has changed from the previous round?
I have not looked at the last round.
That's.
Yeah, the other thing, if we want to get comments from the public in general, at large, I've used this for something else and I can, it's very easy, is you go to Microsoft Forms and you could actually put a form right on the, on the website, and it will, you just ask for their name, and they're add us what the map number is they're commenting on and what their comment is. And it drops them into an Excel sheet that then you can track and consolidate the comments. So, one of the little apps in the, in the SharePoint is Forms, and it's pretty self-explanatory. I can help you. But it's just an easy way to get input without having to have it get lost in correspondence files. I mean, that might happen too, but.
Okay, anything else on the FEMA map? So, an update from the MBTA Community Multi-Family Zoning District 3A, six members have been chosen.
And I believe that the board of selectmen and the planning board are being asked to interview sometime in May?
Yes.
For the at-large people?
Yes, at their meeting, they suggested May 1st or May 8th. Now, I know Laura, you may have a conflict with May 8th.
Correct.
So their next meeting is May 1st, would the board entertain attending the select board meeting on the 1st of May?
I'm not available.
You're not available. But everyone else? You're available.
I don't know. I think I'm available.
So, are we as a board going to discuss criteria of members at large?
We can.
I think one of the criteria was somebody with climate, climate action or climate sustainability experience, and that's all I know about it.
I mean, we are the people that will bring these regulations forward if they come forward, correct? I mean, I think we should have some input on what we're looking for, research.
Yeah, was anybody at the last select board meeting? I wasn't, but I've heard from several residents that the criteria that the, the select board, I guess, wants to put forward for the at-large members is different than what it started out to be, so if somebody could go over those clarifications, since we haven't discussed them at the board.
Well, if we're gonna meet jointly, why wouldn't we start by talking about what we're, those, if the select board has come up with criteria and that they suggest, then we could meet and discuss them together and then review the applications.
I guess, are we okay with the select board taking the lead on this? I mean, we are the zoning board that takes, should take the lead on this. I feel like we're stepping back and letting them take the lead.
Well, we're seven votes, they're fine.
Whatever.
I mean, that's if we make it at May 1st, which Mary and I just said we weren't available.
Right, so if we could look at the 8th or after?
We could look at after.
It's Greg, I, I mean, are the criteria, when you say criteria for, for members, is there, like, what would be controversial about? I'm just trying to understand what that's.
And again, I mean, this is hearsay, so I hate to, you know, I was not there, but I've had people come up to me and say, some of the criteria has changed that, you know, people have to be in person, they can't Zoom ever. They can't travel, they need to be at all the meetings. So it's just different criteria than what was presented, and quite honestly, different criteria than
Yeah, that.
we require for boards or committees, so.
If you attend that select board meeting, you're correct, they wanted somebody that wasn't gonna go away for two months. They wanted someone that was gonna be here, they thought that the meeting requirements would be twice a month. That kind of commitment they were looking for in a person. Would we be, would we be opposed to something like that?
I think it merits discussion because that's why we have hybrid meetings. And it's just a different threshold than we use for other committees and task forces, so I'm just curious why.
I think availability has always been a, a criteria that you would ask people, are you available for meetings and for? I mean, and also, I do think that there will be a lot of in-person work of walking through the. So, to me, it's like, we should certainly find out what they're thinking and respond to it, but I don't know that we can do it in the abstract.
Well, it seems to me it'd be a certainly question you could ask the candidates, are you available for the next three months?
I mean, I.
To be twice a week and, and do site visits.
Twice a month.
I don't.
Perhaps if they're coming up with criteria, we should come up with criteria, is my point. I mean, if, I mean, we are the zoning promulgator, so if.
Yeah.
True.
So we probably have time now, because we don't.
We have 15 minutes.
15 minutes.
Yeah, criteria, anybody want to take a first cut?
Well, I mean, I don't know who's on, who's been selected and what their backgrounds are, so I guess the names of people that are, so to see where holes and gaps could be. So, without a lot of this information, it's kind of hard to see where some gaps could be, but.
You mean, if they exist of the, who's been appointed?
Correct.
The candidates, the at-large candidates?
No, the, the other ones.
No, it wasn't.
I mentioned that six people were chosen, so those six people and what their, who they are and what their backgrounds are to see where gaps could be.
Betsy, you have that information?
Yeah, and I would ask if we have somebody on CONCOM, because that's, you know, it's a very FEMA map sensitive area. So I think that might be good to have a CONCOM representative.
Think Sarah Melish was gonna be on?
So, so far, Michael Pratt from the Finance Committee, Sarah Melish from the Zoning Board, Chris Olney from the Planning Board, Susan Philbrick from the Planning Board, and Robert Smith from the Historic District Commission. And Gar Morse from the Downtown Improvement Plan Committee. And the select board, I'm not aware who the select board have suggested or the CONCOM have suggested, and then there's two at-large.
Is it Ann Harrison or? Greg, are you on?
I'm just Becky.
Ron, yes.
Did you have the select board candidate for the task force?
Um, they did choose, yeah, they chose, yeah, they chose that at their last meeting, I believe. I have to double check, I believe it was Ann and John Ryan as the alter, alternate.
And do you have the, were there specific selection criteria for the members at large that were discussed? That you have at the top of your head?
The focus of the discussion was whether or not someone needed to be here year-round, or at least be able to make the meetings, the majority of the meetings. So there was, that was the focus of the discussion. So that would be a long line of questioning that they would, they would have during the interviews.
Availability.
I think it might be good to reach out to CONCOM, that's my suggestion, to get a representative from there.
I've already done that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
They're appointing someone?
They were supposedly gonna have a special meeting within the next week or so, to a point.
Oh, good, okay. And then, I guess I would ask, this doesn't have to do with candidates, but could we as a board, and I'm assuming the town has this, get some of the data? I mean, we must know how many multifamily units we have within a half-mile radius of the train station and density calculations and things like that, so can we start reviewing some of that? Either as a board or as members, so we can start to get more of a handle on what our current numbers may be and what, what expansion may be needed or not? Do we have that as, as planning information?
So there is the assessor's database, but it collects data by zone, not by distance. But there are tools that the state is putting together as part of a.
No, I understand that, but as a town, we should be able to know, okay, there's X amount of acreage in the general district. There's X number of multifamily units in the general district, since we're mostly talking general district at this point. There's, you know, X amount of acres that are, are not fully developed. You know, so we should have all of that, I would think. We don't need a consultant for that.
Well, it seems to me that's the work of the task force, is to gather that information and figure out what's relevant and.
I have some of that data now, but I don't, I haven't processed it fully, just because I've been working on other things. So.
But you're right, I think.
Probably mid-May, I will have that information available.
Okay, so that's just as a town, and again, outside of like the consultant, that we would just have this for this project or any project going forward, I mean, I think it's basic information that we should have.
So is it possible just to start, and I think I did see a task, a folder, just to put that information in it? I don't think we need to meet till mid-May.
Yeah. I mean, I have had a couple of discussions with the assessor, and one of the problems is, is there's no tracking. Apparently, the former assessor and the present assessor don't track ADUs. So, and I know the town administrator has request, made that request.
Okay, yeah, because it's come up multiple times at the planning board meeting, that the town start doing that, especially at what, when we keep saying, how many, how many do we have, how many do we have? And then we've gotten a couple approved, and they're still being just tracked as.
Duplexes, yeah.
So that would make sense.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're a little off track, I'm, I'm just talking about the meeting with the joint boards on the selection of at-large candidates. I guess at their meeting, they threw out May 1st or May 8th, it sounded like those two days were problematic with this board?
Well, uh, May 8th is good for me. We're scheduled for May 8th, so that's fine. It should be fine for us anyways.
May 8th? May 8th?
That's our regular schedule, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll go with May 8th?
But is there any other criteria that you would want to add?
It sounds like availability seems to me to make a lot of sense.
Yeah.
As a, and then, I think, it's not like we're gonna have masses of people, maybe we'll have masses of people, but it seems to me we're gonna have an opportunity to, to interview several people and pick two, and maybe want an alternate or something.
So I've seen three or four people express interest in the at-large positions.
I guess I would, I know that the select board had said climate change experience, and I, I'm not sure what that means, given that I've done climate change work for 30 years, and I don't, and so I think that the, the relevant experience is, or our knowledge is about maybe the flood zones and landscape, if we can sort of broaden that to include landscape and, and actual, and site plan and engineering as a, as possible expansion, expanding that definition, because climate change as a experience sector is vague and.
It's broad.
Broad. We're all experiencing climate change. And, I mean, I do climate change work, but I do energy work, and I don't think that's the, what we're talking about here, so. It might be, but I think we're talking about floods and land use and, so.
Yeah, I think floods is one aspect.
You have some. Also, land use, urban design.
Yeah.
Housing, I mean, there are many, several criteria which may be relevant.
That intersect, right.
That will intersect, and I think the boards will finish appointing.
Yeah.
And, yeah, I don't, I don't feel as much like we have to fit a person to fill a particular gap based on the boards, but rather that we look at the candidate selection. You know, letters of interest from the folks and see what they bring and what their availability is, and, you know, choose on that merit. There are some, you know, there's some sort of professional expertise that I think is useful.
So, so far, Lorraine Ayavani has expressed interest. Denny Hall. And James Dietrich have expressed interest.
I think, I think we should refrain from trying to evaluate them at this point.
Yeah, no, I agree. I was thinking, just because I'm just thinking in the moment, maybe someone with real estate development expertise, like almost the opposite side of what would a developer do if this was available and what would this look like? I mean, I think I need a little more time to mull this over, but, you know, I'm always the glass half-empty kind of person, so what could this worst-case scenario look like, so someone that can model that, I think is important.
Build it out, yeah, I don't, I agree with you, I think that's a good. Well, we'll also have a consultant to help with that too, I think, if the, you know, if the person doesn't have that particular.
I don't know if a consultant, especially if we're applying through MIPC, is the person that's gonna do that for us.
I think an entity that can model that for us as a technical resource is a valuable assistance to the, to the group.
Okay, so, any more comments on this? We'll, we'll send the message back from May 8th or deliver right here. All right, I've got three minutes.
This folder has some documents that Christina and Mary need to sign.
Okay, while we're waiting, could you use two, maybe sign this?
Okay, okay. So this is basically to say that you're on the planning board, it's a requirement from the Registry of Deeds. If you'd like to read this letter, there's a letter with it.
Um, sure.
So you would sign this upper section as a planning board, so when a plan gets signed.
Share.
Um, your, this form will go on record.
This is what we're gonna.
We're gonna be dealing the School Street debt, so if you could pull that up, as I had seen it.
The one.
Street.
The site.
Today.
Site PDF, of course.
So it's standard form that every planning board is on record.
Kind of tiny. I understand, I've signed it before, just, there's been lots of changes with COVID.
Betsy, are we back to all planning board members signing, or is it still Ron?
So we have Ron and Sarah as people who can sign the A and Rs, but.
Give me share.
You have to give me permission to sign.
The full planning board comes on as well.
But for like special permits and that thing, is it full board again, or is it still Ron?
I think it can be either. I think it's still be Ron, that's the point of that, technically.
Yeah.
All right, I got it.
Okay.
Is this what you want me to share?
I have, it's not.
Is this what you want?
I have to vote to open a continued public hearing.
No, you just opened.
Is this the ANR we're doing?
Yes, it's the 117.
Well, the drainage schools.
Okay, 7 o'clock. I'd like to open the continued public hearing from April 10th at 7:00 PM, 117 School Street, Section 10.3, newly for a site drainage plan. Any statement from the applicant? Is the applicant here?
So.
Yes, sorry about that, we're.
Yeah.
Yeah, me as well, sorry, Mr. Chair. Might know that from Patriot Engineering. Brian is on the line, but he is just on the phone, so if you don't mind, I'm gonna kind of run this a little bit, be there if there's any questions that pertain to him, it's supposed to be. With that, if it's all right, I'll get going.
Yes.
Can I just, wait a minute, make a couple of comments here?
Okay.
At the, so at the last meeting, there were, the board had the following concerns. Whether the proposed stormwater system qualified as a system for artificial recharge, of which there was no definition in the zoning bylaw for that. Whether there was a degradation of water quality, whether there was a wetlands located in the backyard, whether the applicants could decrease the amount of impervious surfacing from the almost, almost, what is it? 20, almost 29% coverage to a more reasonable amount. The stormwater system review is triggered due to the fact the impervious coverage is more than 15% of the lot area. And it's, the impervious coverage is about just shy of 29%. And whether the newly proposed poolhouse barn was included in the lot coverage requirements. And so I had a meeting with DPW based on the old plans, which did not include the cul-tech system you have put in, in this most recent round of plans. And DPW, Chuck Dam, Nate DeRozers and I met, and we were trying to figure out whether, what, what was the definition of an artificial holding system for stormwater. We viewed that the proposed system of kind of blocks with sand and holding material underneath would suffice or be sufficient for that. However, you've also added a cul-tech system, so it seems like that meets that requirement. The test pits indicated that the soils were sandy, and the town engineer basically gave me an email saying that he did not believe, based on just the sand system, that it would degrade the water quality. Now you've got a cul-tech system in, so he further believes that it's not gonna degrade the water quality. We have a document from Mr. DeRosa, who is a wetland scientist that, and it's in SharePoint, that there are no wetlands on the site. It might have been an old wetland on the site, but it is since filled, and it's not considered a wetland anymore. The lot coverage is the most concerning of the staff, and then, so, and the calculations do include the, the barn, poolhouse, whatever you want to call it. Now, DPW brought up something to me today, which depending on the roof type, if it's gonna be a metal roof, there is gonna have to be some form of check on the quality of the water quality coming off the roof. And then the final comment was that because it's a pool, it's gonna have to go to the ZBA. So, that's where we stand.
Can I add one more question?
This is a public hearing, right? Did we officially open it and tell that?
Yeah.
No, we didn't, no, we didn't.
Yeah, yeah, Ron opened it.
This is a continued public hearing.
Can we have to vote on it, uh-huh?
No, you don't have to.
No, no, okay, I mean, we always do, I'm just making sure we didn't talk for no reason, okay.
I have one other issue, and that is that the plan shows a proposed driveway. I'm at the bottom, it's that.
Yeah, I can, I can explain that if you'd like, didn't know if we were ready to jump in. I thought I heard someone else say they had something else.
That was mine, additional.
Okay.
Yeah, you're on, Mike.
All right, so I'll, I'll kind of pick that ball up where, where Betsy started, left it, and try to walk you through it, what the changes you're looking at. So, I did receive that email, Betsy via Brian, it looks like there was a typo in my email, so I didn't see that email until today, but I think you summarized it pretty much spot-on. Where it does say proposed driveway, I'll start there, bottom left, the bottom of the screen, over to the left a little bit. If you recall, the previous version of the plan had, had that portion as previous pavers. What we did is, we, we're gonna expand the driveway just a little bit with asphalt there, but then you'll see that there's transition line as we move from left to right, yeah, right there, that runs across the entire length of the driveway. From that point forward, or that point right, it will be pervious. Again, keeping the high point at the back edge of that, that newly proposed driveway, again, that was only a couple feet. You can see that, what that allowed me to do was to increase the pervious paver area of the driveway, capture all of that. And if we, when we get to the chart, you see it's actually small, that was, that allowed me to reduce the total of pervious a little bit, to bring that number up to 30. From there, the differences from the last plan is that instead of just, as, as was mentioned, instead of just having the pervious paper being the infiltration system, I've created a kind of subsurface feeder system or sub-drain, you can see that, that line with a broken. You can see that, that line with a broken D in between it. That's a main feeder line. Uh, that's a perf pipe that will collect under the pervious pavement, which will still be stone and sanded as mentioned. But that will outlet to the aforementioned infiltration system. I heard from the last meeting that that's kind of the, the systems that this board is used to seeing and being okay with in regards to recharge, so that's what we put in. And that was, of course, because we had the unknown with the, with the DPW and town engineer not necessarily having a definitive answer for you. Sounds like we got there. I did have an offline conversation with the town engineer, just before, kind of just get some direction. This is where we ended up. But it sounds like that was prior to the meeting internally. Other than that, I just tried to add some dimensions as was requested for, for everything that, that we're laying out here. Uh, I think I've got enough there that would satisfy the plan to be built as you would approve it. Uh, and then I, I went ahead and broke down the chart. We can't see that on the screen, but it's to the, to the right. In terms of existing that was already out there. One, one side knows that the existing pervious was already over the 15%. I think it was 24. Don't hold me until I see that though. And then from there, I went ahead, just, just started 25. And then I went ahead and added in what we were proposing. You can see the driveway, uh, second, second row down and proposed is actually minus 53 square feet, which is like I explained that term just of even though I added some asphalt, we pushed the pervious portion up to show that the driveway was a net reduction. And then everything else, the pavers, the pool area, pool equipment, uh, the dwelling. The dwelling is the proposed barn slash poolhouse. You can see that that's a total increase of above 5%. And a total of the 29.7, 59.57. I think with Betsy's summary in mind, that that was pretty much everything we talked about. Happy to answer any questions. The only one I can't answer, and I'll throw it to Ryan over, because the roof material, I don't know if that's been decided or not. And if he gets a chance to pop on, I'm sure he'll let us know. Other than that, Mr. Chair, back to you.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Any questions from the board? Laura?
Yeah, I have a, well, a follow-up question on the roof as to why metal versus shingle or something different would result in a different treatment plan for the stormwater runoff. Uh, a minor thing on the plan, which is that the building setback seems to be broken by the, maybe it's just the overhang of the roof on the proposed building. But I think my biggest question is, uh, the bullet on Betsy's memo that says the lot coverage appears to be almost double what the recommendations are for the groundwater overlay district. And wanting to see calculations on how the lot coverage figure were generated. Those should include the barn and poolhouse. So there's a, is there a recommendation for the groundwater district? Or is there a limit that we're up against? How do we get clarity on that?
Basically, you're reviewing it because it's over 15%. And it's almost 30%.
Right, so 29.7, yeah.
And they are providing cul tech system now as well as another infiltration system.
So I, I can see from the calculations that the, um, the runoff is reduced from the stormwater. So when I read the stormwater report, I see that the existing, pre-existing conditions and the proposed post-conditions, the run-up volume has reduced by almost half for the 100-year storm. So that makes sense to me, but I'm just struggling a bit with the extent of coverage being, you know, just under 30%. Is that, is that allowable? I mean, we say that it's, it's preferred to be 15 to 20%, but do we have any kind of jurisdiction there to make it under that?
They're recharging.
Yeah, they are recharging.
They are recharging, yeah, so I...
Is it the recharging that allows them to go to 30% instead of 15? Is that basically what we're doing?
Well, I think to Betsy's point, if I, I'm sorry. I think the bylaw is a little loose in the, um, my opinion, definition that if you're above the 15%, it's because of the water overlay district and you need, you know, to do something. I don't think the intent of the bylaw was you could go up to 80%, right? But as long as you have a recharge, you're good. So I think it's on our list to tighten that one up, but, um, that's my only explanation. I don't know that we have parameters per se around it in the bylaw.
I have a question, um, and that is of the applicant, if you don't mind. And that is the three by three, three foot by three foot pavers are counted in the impervious, but the plan shows pervious pavers. And those are what, what permeable, permeable pavers. Uh, what is, what is that? Because the other thing I'm concerned about a little bit is that as you over time, pervious pavers, we have a lot of pervious pavement here that needs to, that could over time essentially become impervious. And that is not count, correct me if I'm wrong, that's not counted as in your calculations at all?
Correct. It's counted in the driveway. They're reducing the impervious in the driveway by 53 square feet.
Yeah, but, but the, so can you explain to me the, um, if there, if the permeable pavers are counted at all? Because I do think we have considerable, I mean, that's a, I know Laura, what do you, is that a lesser, uh, I would think it would be, it would be a lesser...
Coefficient.
Coefficient of permeability, but I don't know. Is there a, is it perceived to be the same as a sod or?
No, I mean, there's different, you know, friction coefficients on, on that. But we can let the engineers speak to it.
So...
So yeah, I can try to clarify that a little bit. If there's anything else, please feel free. So the, the areas that are permeable pavers, that would be the driveway hatch on the left-hand side, we can see that the, we go from a blank, a blank hatch on the existing driveway to a proposed kind of brick hatch. And then through where, through the main patio area of proposed permeable pavers. What that will be is that will be the paver block of, of the homeowners' choice. And what it is, is really the joints and how they're set in, in the stone base that allows that any runoff from those individual stone pavers, instead of creating a sheet flow, it will find a joint and, and go in through the, the small stone into the larger stone and infiltrate like we kind of talked about already. You're right that that requires maintenance in order to not become pervious. Because of where this is, uh, excuse me, to become impervious. Because of where this is, uh, the idea of the patio itself being sanded and having a lot of kind of travel all over in terms of where you worry about these is, is in roadways, you know, salting, sanding, and just overall dirt and grime. The idea of this patio, uh, you know, I would assume would just be foot traffic, uh, i- if anything else. The driveway, of course, we'll have to keep an eye on for maintenance. But again, this, that's not necessarily a heavy traffic area. It's just the colors that, that belong to the house. The pavers, the three by three pavers are those blocks to the far right prior to the infiltration system. Those are, you know, this was the landscape architects, I'm gonna channel them for a second to kind of look at their vision of having kind of extended patio that transitions into the yard. They're more of an open joint, but they're not gonna be set in the state, the sand and the stone as I've designed for the permeable paver section. So I counted those 20-some-odd blocks as pervious, because if you put them all together, even though they're, they're shown to be spaced out, you put them all together, they out, they will be impervious. And they're larger stones, three by three, so I felt those need to be counted. The permeable paver sections that I just spoke about, the stone, uh, stone joints and a stone underneath, those were not counted as pervious. It was a little long-winded, but I hope that clarifies a little bit.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the board?
I, I, um... In past, um, situations like this, we have had DPW here or we've had a written statement from them giving a report since they are town engineers. So I would feel more comfortable if they, and I know you reached out, if they were here or we had a written report from the town engineers.
Betsy, you met with them?
Yeah, um, Chuck Dam is out of the office on personal leave. And, um, so Nate is, is operating as both positions for a little while. And so he ended up talking with me, but I'm not sure he has the time to put anything in writing. Just trying to think if he did...
Didn't he send an email?
Send me an email.
On the roof, hard for a long time.
Okay, um...
And then I have one question.
So he sent me an email mid-day today saying, "Hi all. The addition of the cul tech system should alleviate any concerns or questions regarding meeting infiltration requirements, but installation of the system will be more invasive as it's being installed in an area that was not previously proposed to be disturbed." They've added six-inch perforated, perforated pipe, starting under the pavers going to the cul tech system. They will be providing an operation and maintenance manual for the cul tech. One item to clarify is the roof material that's being proposed for the new building. If it's metal, they need to implement a best management practice capability of removing metals as, such as a sand filter, organic filter, or filtering bio-retention area as it is zone two for any runoff from the roof.
Did that go to the whole board?
No, that went to you and me and Gail. So, good day.
Something in writing I can forward it.
So, yeah, my concern though is we're hearing about it right now and we're supposed to process all of this. So I think, yeah, if we could see that stuff or get a report from, again, the DPW, that would be good. I just had another question. I'll get it, I'll get it. The, um, it was, I had a question about, so, because in your write-up, Betsy, you say it, they don't have a cul tech and now they do. And I guess I would want some understanding of that process. And does it do any treatment to the water before it then goes into the groundwater? Is, is that part of this type of artificial infiltration, infiltration system? And kind of how that works? And I think again, in prior, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, that if it is an artificial recharge system going into the ground during the process, if approved, we need a, you know, a brief plan, but kind of a, um, I'm lacking words tonight, but a kind of a water containment plan. Just so if runoff is happening while this is going in, because it can take days to do, they need to put some...
Erosion control.
Thank you, erosion control, thank you.
So it's in a relatively flat area of the lawn. And as I understand how the system works, is that basically it's a series of perforated pipe and the perforated pipe is put in sand and other materials and it infiltrates into the ground?
No, yeah, I understand that. Yeah, I just am looking at what the construction...
The structure's run off.
Period?
Well, during construction, yeah, we've had like the erosion control, you know, what is that, right? That usually is part of the application. And, um, um, yeah, I mean, I, there's lots of pieces of information that I just haven't seen. So that concerns me.
So if I may, Mr. Chair? There's erosion control shown planning, you can see at the bottom, right where it says, above where it says overall site plan, it says proposed erosion control. There is a silt fence detail in the bottom left of the plan. So, uh, and you can follow that line all the way around. So, and again, as, as was stated, it is a flat site. So with the silt fence barrier up and any, uh, any maintenance, uh, excuse me, any, any runoff during construction will certainly be taken care of from the silt fence. Again, this, and the system itself can go in and be functioning pretty quickly. Those only take a day or two to put in with someone who's got a machine and an understanding. So, so those could actually, that could actually get online pretty quickly too. So it's not like we're gonna have a hole there for days or weeks of on air. So I want to adjust that erosion control a little bit. We did make some, some adjustments for that.
So and then there's operations and maintenance manuals on how that system operates and requirements for when it gets cleaned out, which is usually two to four times a year.
And we also don't have any...
Uh, no, those are usual, I'm sorry, no, those usually look, they're inspected twice a year. And if there's silt and, and water shown after 72 hours, then they're cleaned up. But, uh, no, they, they would not need to be maintained two to four times a year. They're inspected twice a year at best.
The, um, excuse, the, I'm sorry, the, the bylaw actually does have a design and operations guidelines as a condition of granting a special permit. It's on, it's Section 1.3, 1.6, 1.5.
Michael, do you know the material of the roof?
Uh, I don't. Ryan?
I can address that, Mr. Chair. Brian Stein, BDS Design. It will not be a metal roof, it will be just a typical asphalt shingle. And just real, real quick to address that, uh, that bump out into the setback, that is a chimney, which is allowed to be in the setback per zone zone.
Thank you.
So any other questions from the board? So we have a tentative buy-in by our engineer, town engineer on this plan. But to Mary's point, she did not, we did not distribute that email to the board, although you read it into the record. So, um, what's the pleasure of the board on this?
So can I, can I just ask to sort of summarize this into something we can all deal with here?
Yes.
So if this were not in the water resource district, they would be allowed to have 30% lot coverage? Am I right? Because it's in the water resource district, they, it's required only 15%. And that's why they're having this infiltration system. So currently, what is the current lot coverage of the existing property right now?
Yeah, I was wondering. I think if I scroll over, I just...
It's over, I forget what it is.
Yeah. I'm scrolling over.
It's around 24%.
24%.
24%.
25%.
So they're already exceeding it. But with this water filtration system, it'll be the equivalent of a 15% lot coverage in terms of drainage, is that fair to say?
Good question.
I think it's, it's improved, I believe. Uh, I don't know the number.
So the lot coverage requirements for structures in, this is an A-zone? Or B-zone?
A.
A.
Notes.
By structures is 15% and maximum lot of structures in impervious is 30.
30, yeah, okay. So they're going from 24 and theoretically with this infiltration system would be the equivalent of something less than 24. So I guess by approving this drainage plan or improving the water runoff, both quantity and quality from the site.
But can I just go to the, in this zone, if it wasn't in the water resources, what is the percentage of coverage from structures?
15%.
15.
15. So structures are currently, something less than 15. So 15 is roughly, and with the new poolhouse...
27.
27.82 is the new.
27.82, that's more than 15% of the...
So I misspoke earlier, so that, you know, no matter where you are, but if you're in the water overlay district, if it's 30% is your max, that's what your max is. You can't, you know, just because you do a 15%, just because you do an infiltration system doesn't mean you can go over. That's why they're at 29.7, so that's good.
I see, so there is the upper limit. Yeah, okay.
Any other questions or comments?
So I guess the one question I have is, is in fact the water runoff from the site gonna be the equivalent now of a 15% lot coverage?
I don't think you can make that. I don't think you can calculate that. It's about how you, it's not about what the coverage is, it's about how much runoff there is. And so...
And so maybe the engineer could talk us through the chart on page one of the stormwater, stormwater report and what the pre and post conditions are and what percent reduction that would equal.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Is that something that can, that you need me to pull up or is that something that?
Yeah, could you pull it up? Could you pull it up? It's in your stormwater? Well, I don't know if we can pull it up. It's in the stormwater report.
It's on the front page, the, the.
Page one.
Page one.
The chart.
I can do that. Make that a lot bigger.
While we're leaving at that, I think one thing that we were concerned before, too, was about the historical high ground watermark. And I didn't hear that addressed. Oh, yeah. Did we get that number?
Let's do one thing at a time. So is this the?
That's the chart. Maybe the engineer could explain the reduction and what that percentage of reduction from pre to post is.
I can certainly walk through the, the chart and what it means. And then you'll need to tell me which percentage for which storm. So what this is, is this is a summary of the hydro, hydrocap analysis. And the existing is, of course, the existing site as it sits right now, modeled with the house, the driveway, the open space areas, based on the coverages, impervious, obviously the ice runoff, grass, landscaped area, mulch, so on and so forth. Those broken up areas modeled with the equivalent storms that you can see on the left, 2, 10, and 100, which is 3.2 inches per hour, 5.6 inches per hour. And that, that's modeled over a 24-hour period. From that, you get results that show a rate and a volume of runoff. The rate is, of course, the cubic feet per second or how fast it's coming. And then volume is cubic feet, which is how much. So you can see that there's a rate and a volume for each storm event toward the existing conditions. The next column is exactly the same thing, except with the new proposed improvements put in there and the areas that they overlay, i.e. where the, where the pool house is, that was grass. So now that grass area becomes impervious area. Where the, where the, those stone pavers that we spoke about that are called 03 by 3, where those areas were, they go on top of grass. So their, that grass area is pulled down and replaced with impervious. And that yields a new model that we then, that I then run the same exact storms through for the same amount of time. And it gives the, and then, of course, excuse me, the infiltration system has also been modeled as well. And that is modeled as a storage and an infiltration system. So water can be stored there and it also models the groundwater discharge based on the soil testing that was done, the equivalent infiltration rate from the stormwater handbook. From that, you get the results of the proposed conditions with all that water captured and put into the system. And you can see that there's a reduction in rate and volume for each column to 10 and 100. Now, if we want to look at percentage, to me, if I can offer my opinion, volume's more important because, you know, the rate of water is one thing, but if you're sending more water than used to go to a certain place, that's where problems happen. So if we look at, you can see that 34, 56, over 63, 37 is just shy of 50%. Just over 50's percent, 54%. So we're at, so if we do, we're looking at about a 45% reduction in volume at 100-year storms. So that's eight inches of rain over 24-hour period. With the system that's designed, you'll get about 45% less, less water, volume of water leaving the site. So that's what that chart means. I hope, is that kind of bringing it to perspective or do I need to go any deeper?
Yeah, so approximately 50% reduction to 10 and.
Yeah, not quite, but we're, we're close. Yeah, plus or minus.
Okay. What about the groundwater table? Was that your question, Christina?
So historic groundwater is a difficult thing to kind of find. USGS has multiple different data points. The closest well is, and I tried my best to try to give you something that would be understandable to you and I and to be able to determine that. The best I could do is to come up with that that water can range from anywhere to six to nine feet. But to be honest with you, the website was not very user-friendly, for me at least. So if there's information that you as a board or you as a town have that I should be looking at, I'd be open to try to do that. But to determine that the historic groundwater level at that particular area proved to be difficult to say at least. I just don't think USGS has it close by. Like I said, the website is, 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 you can go down a pretty good route of data and not really come up with anything, to be honest with you. So I'm not really sure what we're looking for.
Did you look at any borings? Was there any borings taken?
Yeah, he did a test.
No, no borings.
Oh.
Okay.
Test, he did one test.
So I mean, it asks part of monitoring wells or historical data.
You said the groundwater six foot below existing, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, where I found estimated seasonal high, which is typically what we look for in stormwater design, and that is, I'm not looking at the plan, but I think it was, was about six, six and a half feet. I think it was at elevation 34 or 5, which kind of coincides with the six to nine feet data that I was finding. You know, when we're talking about historical groundwater, how long are we talking about, you know, in what area? So, you know, there's no evidence of any historic, of any groundwater above where I dug. But again, that's, it's one of those things that I'm, Laura? I could explore it if I knew a little bit more of what we're looking for, but to stay historical, groundwater is very vague to me and I'm just not sure. What data do you give, to be honest with you?
Seasonally, would groundwater be on the higher side now typically in an annual cycle?
Right now, yes.
Yes, and it's been a rainy season so far? So.
Uh, that, that doesn't really have a lot to do with it. It's more about.
Just winter melt and.
The time of year melts, you know, the freezing and thawing, so on and so forth.
Yeah.
And that's why we look for two things. Look for, obviously, evidence of water in the ground. You know, everyone's dug a hole at some point and water falls in it. That's water. But then there's the estimated seasonal high, which is modeling, you know, the rust, for lack of a better term, the rust coloring in the soil where the water comes upstairs, leachants, chemicals, leachants on the iron out of the soil and leaves basically a rusty oxidization. That's the typical call and the accepted criteria to determine estimated seasonal high in regards to that, that modeling is created over hundreds and thousands of years. So you could, you could, I hesitate to use that interchangeably for stored groundwater, but that is the typical highest level of groundwater, you know, estimated seasonal.
Was that horizon aburged when you did the test pit?
Yeah, let me just look at the, so I found, what I found was actually, yes and no. I found water coming in at that, that level that I called it, which was 72 inches, 34.5. There was some modeling evidence where it was coming in. There was no modeling evidence above it. So that made me think that the water pretty much is at that level. And it's relatively, and it makes sense. We're in the coastal area, the groundwater's not going to, it's not going to surge or drop drastically. It's probably going to stay pretty consistent considering the area we're talking about.
So what was the 72 inches?
So from the, from the elevation, the existing elevation where I dug the test pit, it's shown on the plan. At 72 inches below the ground, below the finished grade, I found evidence of water and model.
More than four feet. And the bottom of the CULTEC chamber that, that profile is 40-something inches down?
Yeah, or two feet above that, that mark as, as per the stormwater management.
Thirty-one, thirty-six, like five.
So I guess it says that we need to see this. So I guess that's, I mean, I'm sorry that you might be this first one that we're like going through this. But, you know, as determined by monitoring wells and historical table fluctuation data compiled by the USGS. So, I mean, I mean, that's part of this whole conversation. Do we say yes if it's not presented to us? I mean, is this one test pit enough, I guess?
Historic groundwater.
I will be honest with you that, that this is the standard practice that I've, I've used for years now. I've never been asked to provide historical data. I'm not saying we shouldn't, we should. I'm just saying this is, it's an odd request, to be completely honest with you. And I'm not sure what else that would tell you. Historical high groundwater, I guess if you're, if you're concerned that there could be higher groundwater at a different point of the site. Typically, when these are installed, I do an inspection prior to the installation. And if there's any evidence of not having the two-foot separation from the high groundwater, then we obviously make a change. Because that's something that usually I have to certify at the end for the homeowner to get a certificate of occupancy. So that's kind of a notice of spenders that's typically done.
So the part of the zoning bylaw isn't really with the system. It's actually just disturbance of the ground in general.
Any other comments? Laura?
Seems that the CULTEC chamber as designed is within the area of soil that's at least two feet above groundwater. And that the proposed building is going to have a foundation, but that appears to be exempt because that will be four feet deep. So although still above groundwater, I mean, I think it, you know, it's an increase in impervious surface, certainly. The calculations that are provided by the stormwater chart show a reduction in runoff of approximately 50% for all of the three design storms. And if the civil engineer, as part of the regular process, is going to sign an affidavit saying that what got built is per specs and plans, then I think we have the information that we need to make a decision one way or the other.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I have two comments. First of all, I agree with Laura. And I, I do know that, I mean, getting historic groundwater is a, like, it's a, it is a subjective, I think. It's a little challenging.
Groundwater varies.
Varies, seasonally. So that's, I'm less worried about that, I guess. I am, I would like to verify, I don't think we have to verify it, but the applicant needs to ensure that the, that their structure is not more than 15% of the lot coverage. I just did the numbers. I think it's under 15. But that would require a ZBA variance. And so I want to make sure that in our decision, we don't imply that that structure is compliant or not compliant. That's for the applicant to determine because it's right there on the edge.
It's actually for the building inspector to determine.
Right, well.
Did you do the swimming pool?
I did not include the swim, the pool as a structure. I just think pools are probably not structures. I don't know. I'll let the building inspector figure that out. But.
Can I, can I address that real quick? I'm sorry.
Mr. Stein?
Yes, so this was all looked at and gone over with the building inspector a while ago. And, you know, that's one reason we're doing a smaller pool. It's a soap pool versus a normal size, you know, swimming pool, was to get everything under the 15% and the 30%. So the, the buildings, the pool are all, are under 15% or just under 15%. And like you said, the whole overall impervious is just under 30 to meet zoning. This was all very intentional and, and worked on down, down to the foot. So because we, you know, we would need a variance with zoning if we were to go over either one of those.
Okay, great, thank you. And I have one other comment. I'm sorry. And my other comment is, I guess I'm following the logic of Chris and, and the stormwater calculations. That said, given the impervious pavers, as I'm a little, like, a little less, it feels very impervious there in terms of the design. And one of the things that we said in our zoning changes is that special permit gives us latitude. And I think they've got too much impervious-like, I mean, it feels like the entire, up to those blue stones is some sort of hardscape, whether it's impervious pavers or asphalt or rooftop. I mean, there is no, there's like a little stretch of grass and that's it. And I think that that's not the intent of this, I mean, I think there's this intent of the, in spirit of the, the intent here is not to pave over about every inch of two-thirds of your lot. And it looks to me like it's, that's what's happening. So I think the calculations get them, as they said, they calculated it just to the, to the decimal point to get under the, but special permits give us a lot of latitude. So I'd like to ask the applicant if they can think about doing, doing, I was going to say doing more, but doing less. A couple of thoughts about where they might be able to do less is take out the bluestone. Those are impervious. Add in some, the grassed surfaces that are, that have support underneath them for the driveway permeable areas in lieu of pavers. I think that tires bring in sand and will get clogged up. And I think then we get much more, much closer to the spirit of what we're trying to do here. And you can still function, you can still have a pool and a grill and all the wonderful amenities. And it has a higher permeability, I would guess, particularly in the area that's under the language that says built grill cover and the lance, so the proposed permeable pavers that are adjacent to the driveway. That's the area I'm thinking might be a, not a landscape architect, and I'm not going to pretend to be one, but that's, that's my sentiment, is that this special permit is, gives us some jurisdiction, some leeway here. And going right up to the decimal of the impervious coverage while including this sort of semi-permeable coverage and not counting it at all makes me uncomfortable.
Mr. Chair, can I ask you a question?
Go ahead.
So we, we applied for this as a determination and it was not a special permit. I'm just, I just want to clarify that that's, that's where we're at. It's in the bylaw, it talks about a determination that the system that we're proposing for recharge is, you know, satisfactory to the board. And we do not need, you know, the special permit application.
So it says that they do a recharge. It's worded very, not clearly.
When, when I was going back and forth over email with Billy Inspector and Betsy and others, we, and town council was part of that, I believe, and that we, we were still under a determination, but we needed to have a, a public hearing for that determination. And it was not a special permit.
So he's coming in under. 10.3.1D, which says in consideration, oh, wait a minute. No, it's not the right section.
3.5.1. But then there's also special permit uses in zone 2, 3, A, B, and C.
It says unless a system called infiltration occurs.
And the only reason we're having a hearing on it is there's no way for the planning board to make a determination without. board to make a determination without a hearing.
Right, so we can, is the applicant correct? We can only make a determination and we can't give input? This is, it's not a special permit?
So it's 10.3.5.2B, probably. I think that's what town council reviewed that said it's an either/or. I think the board in previous, and again, wrong, correct me if I'm wrong, has always taken, well, no, I'll back that.
Sure.
It's a prohibited use unless.
Which is satisfactory to the planning board. So if we feel that the recharge won't do enough to make the land more pervious.
So I go by the, our town engineer who reviewed this and found the recharge adequate and found no detrimental respect to decontamination to our groundwater. I think he put that in writing.
I think that's fair on, but I said, the statement here says the planning board. It doesn't say the town engineer, so.
No, we refer to Pierre, we refer to licensed engineers. I'm just telling you my opinion.
I understand, and I'm recognizing Sarah's opinion. And I think that they're both valid, and I think we're, we need to consider those. I mean, it's the planning board decision.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing, actually, with the adequacy of the recharge system. That's not my issue. My issue is that the intent here is to not have lands rendered impervious of more than 15% or 2,500 square feet of any lot, or in this, then 10.3.5.2, lands rendering impervious more than 15% unless a system for recharge. But that's a special permit. So I guess we're not, if we're not using that. But my point is to connect back to our prior discussion, which said that special permits give us latitude. So maybe we're not doing a special permit tonight, and we don't have any, my argument is moot. But going forward, I would suggest that we have these under the special permit provision and then be able to exercise our special permit authority that we have touted as some jurisdiction. Because I feel like this is an example of where the intent of the bylaw is not, it may be the letter of the bylaw maybe approaching the letter of the bylaw, but the intent seems to me not to be the case.
May I respond? I think that the special permit would, if this fell under special permit, I would be asking more questions which are related to the spirit that you're talking about right now, about the extent of paving, not just pervious or impervious, and the heat island that that's going to create, the tree removal. We're not looking at landscape plants, so maybe they're planting more trees, but the combination of much more surface of paving, removal of trees, you know, several which we saw are dying and need to be removed, but we don't know if new trees are getting planted. So, and trees and soils beyond the cul-de-sac chamber provide a stormwater service. You know, they are taking up and recharging stormwater and slowing it down. So we would be able to take a more holistic look at this, I think, if this was under special permit. So I appreciate the sentiment because I think we're, if it's not a special permit, we're constrained.
So if we're not special permit, then we're not, then we're constrained, I agree. So perhaps next time, we can take these up under the special permit provisions, which is later in the bylaw.
Right, but they're coming in under the percentage and the judgment of the planning board that a system for artificial recharge precipitation is provided, which is satisfactory to the planning board, and that it will not result in degradation of water quality.
So can we make the determination and then suggest that they alter their plans to improve the permeability of the site, even though it's not required, just as a, just as a suggestion? I don't know what else we can do.
I think the determination needs to be very clear. That includes the drawings provided. I think there's been other decisions that don't reference the drawings in the past. I think we need to make that very clear, and I think we need to have some kind of an inspection proving that these are still permeable once a year. I mean, I think our determination can be based on that, right? Because if it's, the pavers aren't maintained, I don't know if it's actually recharging in the way it should be. So whatever that language looks like, I think we should be fairly clear. So then the operation and maintenance plan needs to be included.
So I think you made a good point. There's a, there are provisions in 10.3.6.5 for design and operating guidelines, and that they file a design and operating procedure for this.
I thought there was one. Wasn't there an operating procedure?
Is there, was there one submitted? They were going to provide it.
I didn't see it.
Did that come in today?
I don't believe so.
Was that in there?
I think they talked with Nate about providing one.
I would add on to what Christine said in that, you know, if written in the determination that once they go in front of the ZBA for the pool, if any dimensions change, that then they have to come back to the planning board and get another determination.
So how about a motion to approve, provided that an operation and maintenance plan is provided, and that they have once a year or whatever it suggests, and that if any dimensional changes occur at the ZBA, that it come back to the planning board.
And something about historical groundwater. If site conditions are changed, if they find historical groundwater, then they need to contact the building inspector.
I just clarify, I think we're not asking them to, if they dig and they find that groundwater is higher than expected, I don't think it needs to be historical groundwater. It could just be groundwater.
Yeah.
Yeah, is.
Should we close the public hearing?
Well, they've represented that the groundwater is 72 inches.
One at a time.
Yeah, that's what, so it's, if groundwater is higher than 72 inches, which is what he stated.
Chris, you got a comment?
So we're in a public hearing, so do you want to take some public comment before we start making motions?
Yeah, any public comment on this? Hearing none?
Should we close the public hearing and then discuss it?
Are we ready to vote on this? I will close it.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to close has been moved and seconded. Roll call, Laura?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
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 Closed. Your own.
So when, will we review this? Will we review this and then vote on it at the next meeting, once we see it?
Yeah, we have to see the determination written.
Can we, yeah?
So outdrafted for the eighth.
Can we draft something as sort of kind of what was stated?
Referencing the plans, I think it's a good, I always reference plans.
So a motion to continue the deliberation part of the public hearing to next meeting?
Well, normally you have, well, for a special permit, you have 90 days. Yeah, so if you take it up on the, in the eighth, then.
Can we not, can we not sort of verbalize this, what you're going to, the key points of the decision?
Yeah, could you read that in the vote, like, what you wrote?
Well, I had motion, a potential motion to approve with operation and maintenance plan, historic groundwater, and a condition that if the groundwater is higher than 72 inches, that that be addressed.
I think it's.
The building should not change, dimension should not change, inspection once a year.
Building should not increase.
Increase.
Well, the dimensions change, more of what I heard.
Right.
What the ZBA sees, that's sort of what I heard.
And then it goes to the ZBA for the pool.
After our approval or now?
That's what, that's what Sarah wanted. She wanted it to come to this board before it went to the ZBA.
Okay.
So it seems to me they could move it ahead to the ZBA while they're pending our.
Right.
Right.
So the.
Any other comments on what?
Pools are 56 inches. It's four feet of historical, so it's four feet, not 72.
72.
So they're down at 72, they're lower than four feet.
Right. And they need to have two feet between the infiltration system and high water.
That's not the point, that's not the distance. It's if you see groundwater and you're disturbing a surface within this overlay watershed district, it can't be within four feet. I mean, that's part of our bylaw. It has nothing to do with the system, the recharge system. This is just general disturbance of ground.
So where does that say that in the bylaw?
Four feet of, it's in one of the bylaws.
What?
Historical groundwater.
Historical groundwater, four feet.
The problem is you dig down and if you're.
You find out if it's not perched or groundwater.
Several.
If it's not perched water.
Yeah, the problem is you dig, and you don't know what's below you. You don't want to just dig.
Both sand, soil, blah, 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 within four feet of the historic high groundwater. But he's saying high groundwater, his test pits were 72.
72 inches down.
So my point is, if it proves if site conditions change, and they do come within four feet, they need to notify the building inspector and come back for further permission. I mean, they're saying this, but if site conditions are different, the building needs to cease, and they need to come back to the building inspector and the planning board. It's not what we're approving. We're approving that they're less or greater than four. If that deems to be different, then they need to come back.
I think that that's just a, okay. And then the other, just Betsy, make sure that, I mean, they can decrease any of these
Dimensions.
Dimensions.
Or coverage.
Okay, I think we're all happy with what Betsy's written down.
O N M plan, and then I think.
You said that?
I understood, but then some kind of annual inspection that's provided to the building inspector.
I have that in there.
You said that?
Well, the O N M plan.
I think it's got to be DPW, really inspector, I don't, I think, the prior ones, he said he doesn't have jurisdiction over inspecting.
But he's, he's the zoning enforcement officer, so to vote.
Get it to vote. Okay, Mr. Stein and Mr. Novak, you understand, we'll be cleaning this up at our next meeting.
Yes, I got you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'd like to now open the continued public hearing from April 10th. 7PM adoption of rules and regulations, National Law 40A, Section 9, National Laws 41, Sections 81A and 81B. Betsy, where?
So I have comments coming in. I've gotten comments from many people, and had two rounds of comments come in today. And I also did talk with legal counsel about several items, predominantly curb cuts. So what I am recommending is that all comments come in by Friday. I make a final document, it goes off to legal counsel, and that's what the board votes on in May, and on May 8th. And I would also, I feel very strongly that none of the zoning application documents should be in the subdivisionals and regs. So all of those documents, even though they're, they haven't, they're in their original form, should be flipped into either an appendices or a separate document of planning board application documents. So, and the only other thing is the fee schedule also needs to move. And I looked at, and I can do a little more work on this before the eighth, but I did look at fee schedules for a number of different communities around this area. And the only things that kind of struck me were that the special permit and site plan review fees are $150 and $175. And most other communities, it's in the 300 to 400 range. So, and as I understand it from Greg Fetterspiel, is that any fee increase needs to go to the Board of Selectment. So what I will do is do a little more work on fees, and hopefully on May 8th, the board can make a recommendation to adopt and move the documents over from the subdivision regs and then make a recommendation on fees.
Could we separate, if we all made a decision on the fees, can we separate that?
Yeah, yeah. But we have a lineup of people wanting to do curb cuts right now, so I'd really like to get the curb cut issues resolved. And I did talk with legal counsel today because we have some curb cuts that are being proposed on private ways, but there's the potential for those private ways to, because many of the private ways don't have stormwater systems to impact the public ways.
Why are curb cuts being held up? Why is there a backlog?
Because we don't have any regulations.
But we had all regulations, do we act on?
Well, it went to town meeting under, under the new general bylaw.
Understood, but does it, does, do the old, it's just moved over there, but don't the old regulations still in effect before the new ones?
There weren't any.
The planning board was supposed to write the regulations, yeah.
No, but weren't there, when we did curb cuts, we had regulations.
We had a zoning, we had, it is zoning.
We had, you know, safety and.
Right, and those things are in the new general bylaw.
Right, right.
So why can't they move, I mean, I don't understand, why, we need new regulations for that to move over to them?
Well, I think DPW and I think I would feel more comfortable with it. It's not like these people are in a horrible rush.
So are we not going to see these anymore? Is there a reason, like, you don't know about them, you just?
They're going to go to DPW.
So we will be doing those, the ones that are, that the DPW doesn't, can't handle, like the doubles, I think are coming our way.
There's a double one on School Street coming up.
So we need to act on this?
No, 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 it hasn't been filed yet. It's, the person who's filing thinks he's filed a completed application, but he hasn't. So he's been told repeatedly that it's not a completed application.
So I would like to make a question about the content of regulations, and then I have a comment about a driveway, which I'll save to the end of the meeting. But the question about driveways, I had sent this to you, Betsy, is I do think that our regulations should be clear about, that people should get their curb cut approved before they are concurrent with, or before they get their building permit. I'm concerned about this issue of people building their whole house and then, so that's one thing. And then the other thing, I think, I'm not sure it belongs in regulations, but I thought, I know that clarification for folks about who, how zoning is enforced, and maybe it doesn't go in regulations, maybe it goes on the website or something, but I think people need to understand about how zoning is enforced and the building inspector's role. And one of the things that is a challenge, it seems to me, is that it's hard for the building inspector, you know, time and so forth aside, to enforce something until it happens. So you can't arrest me for speeding if I, until I speed, right? So you can't, you know, you can't, if somebody presents a plan that is a height of 20 feet, and then they construct it at 40 feet, the building inspector can't issue an enforcement until that exceeding the plans happens or whatever. So I think that's a, I don't know what, and then the question, I think, is what does, what does the enforcement agent, what tools does he have, or she, in the case? But not that it's, not that it's, it belongs in regulations, but it seems to me if we're trying to clarify things for people, that a clarification about where enforcement happens at least, might be helpful to public. And I'm not sure it belongs in regulations, but. And I'm not sure it belongs to regulations, but it just, it seems to come up over and over and-
I mean, the DPW and I, if we hear of something or if there's a project coming through that we're having preliminary discussions on, we try to keep him in, as much in the loop as possible.
So that's good.
Can I just try to understand, so you're saying a permit, something that requires a building permit gets filed and it's compliant in the plans and then-
Presumably, if you have the, remove the building permit.
Right, and then when does it become non-compliant?
I'm not sure exactly, you know, but let's take an extreme, you know, you put in a building permit for a house that's twenty feet high and then you build it at forty feet high. That is, that you deviate from the plans.
Okay, but at the end of that process, if you filed a-
Permit.
Permit, and you had to, and you required a building permit, then an architect or an engineer has to file an affidavit at the end of the project to the building inspector's satisfaction before they get a C of O, typically an occupancy, that says this was built according to specs and plans. So that's sort of a natural system that's built in, so I'm not sure when the enforcement is, like, is it an addition that somebody didn't file a permit for?
Or are people doing work without permits?
Well, that, that can certainly happen, yeah.
And what if the house is already there and they're changing their curb cut, so there is no building permit.
Well, I think that we actually have a fair amount of things that happen without permits inside homes. That's, that's a, that's an enforcement, that has nothing to do with the planning board, but, you know, if I rip my kitchen out and rebuild it myself.
But there wouldn't be any enforcement unless-
Unless someone told.
Somebody told.
Right, right, it's a hard thing. I just think that somewhere in our, we need to be clear about enforcement, how it happens. So, just because it comes up all the time, I think. So those were just a couple. I'm not sure it belongs in regulations.
Building inspector and talking.
Yes. Thank you, Ron.
It would be helpful to have a understanding in the abstract rather than-
Just thought of it myself.
So I actually have two points for Betsy. First, are the zoning changes that occurred back in November, are they technically in place now? But we don't have the printed out version yet?
We do not, and the reason that we do not is that apparently for the past four or five years, nobody has checked cross-references of the bylaw.
So these are old?
And so when changes were made to numbering system and whatever, nobody checked the cross-references. So I'm in the process of doing that now.
Okay, so that's sort of typo thing?
No, it's, well, it's, some of it's typos and some of it is just, you know, when, when all those numbering changes took place in twenty twenty-one, fall of twenty twenty-one, there were a number of, of other changes that should have been made in the bylaw that weren't.
And the second recommendation is that when you issue the regulations, right now they're in a review, they track changes, so it's a very big, busy document. Can you also do a clean version? That'd be great.
You can just view it by reviewing simple markup.
I'm afraid of doing, when I do that, I might change it.
Can we, I have a question, and it could be at the end of the meeting. I had a resident reach out down on Tappan Street, and apparently there was a light installed this week, last week.
What?
A light, an overhead light on a telephone pole, on a private pole. And the resident, two residents reached out to me, I forwarded it to Paul. And Paul responded, and I'll share, I wasn't going to bring it up now, but we're just talking about enforcement. So it seemed natural that there was no regulations for outdoor lighting, but clearly in our new general standards, understood. But we have these, but now the question is, okay, this light that was newly installed is overseeing it. Paul's initial comment back to the residents were, it can only be done at the time of site planned review. You can't control replacement or repairs. So I think we, I just want to say this out loud, we need to look at this, that if there's two people, then they're very upset. And if you drive by Tappan Street, you will see it, it looks like it's daylight, it's, the light's pretty bad. So I think we need to be considerate and think forward. If people are complaining about these things, you know, Paul said we can't enforce this, or, you know, it doesn't appear, apply to repairs, then we need to rethink this. And maybe Paul should have contributed in the last four years with this recodification. So this light is very concerning. If I lived next door, I would not be a happy camper either. So I really do feel for these people. I just feel like this light can't be installed on private property and we have no, no recourse.
I think that has to be a general bylaw, not a zoning bylaw. A general bylaw that says you can't shine light on other people.
So it's an LED light that's probably shining in somebody's-
Oh, it's more than shining.
Now, it's kind of ironic, we had a discussion about it the other day, because I had some friends over for dinner and a friend of mine who lives in, now lives in Newburyport, where I used to live, they've removed most of the mature trees on his street and they put in LED lights, so, streetlights. So he said, you know, the LED lights shine into his second floor bedroom, and he says, you know, I can read a book.
Well, our general provisions say that there should be no, you know, spilling, so I'm not sure why we can't enforce this. I don't know why the building inspector is responding, and I will share the whole email chain. Because I don't know if Paul's not reading this right, or we need to write better rules to protect our residents, but something's not doing its job here. Like, that's what I'm concerned about.
Can I just make a clarification on LED, not particular to this, whatever's going on in that circumstance, but LED are the current technology for efficient lighting. And there are different color temperatures, and so the brighter, higher color temperatures can certainly be whiter, bluer. There are also LEDs that are warmer, and so, so I just don't want to confuse that LED lights are bad in any way because in our climate and energy efficiency efforts, LED lights are the right thing to do, yeah.
It's, it's not-
So it doesn't mean when you replace a tree when you put it on five thousand.
Lack of trees, it's a bunch of things.
So let me-
We do more on trees too, but we'll get there, yeah.
So I want a motion to continue the, first off, we're all in agreement to get comments by Friday, to Betsy, final comments.
Ron, I have some comments.
Oh.
One is kind of a process of how this is working and two, taking a recommendation actually from the rules and regulations. So if I, as a planning board member, send you comments and edits, are they being, are they all being incorporated into the final document? And then when will we get the next draft that we can then review again?
If I get things by Friday, I would get it to you sometime in the beginning or middle of next week before Thursday's SharePoint deadline.
What about town council?
Town council will have it at the same time.
Well, I would-
Friday, Friday?
As soon as I get everybody's comment.
I would recommend that the planning, so one of the items in this draft is that the planning board for any important documents has two public readings of the document, so we go over it as a board. Because there are some things in here that are, need to be decided that, you know, we haven't discussed. And so I think we, it's hard to do a whole rules and regulations, not discussing as a board and not discussing to the public. So I think it's important that we have those steps in place to do that. If there's a mad rush for the fifty-three G or whatever it is, we can approve it section by section. We don't have to approve the whole thing all at once. So I think curb cuts will take some time, I think site plan will take time, special permit will take time. And just the, you know, the, you know, it won't take super amount of time, but the conduct of meetings and agendas and postings and things like that. I mean, I think it's good for all the board to review as a board. So I, you know, there seems to be some rush and I don't want to rush an eighty-page document that we haven't, as a board, discussed.
We've had this document for two months.
I understand, it's been in different iterations, but we haven't discussed it as a board, and that's what I'm-
Well, there's been a lot of discussion, I think.
Betsy, I'm not here to debate yes or no, I am asking as a board member, can we review-
Understood.
A final draft that then probably will have some more edits before it goes to town council for review. Or if we need to do it in sections, that's fine too.
Laura.
Since we've all had an opportunity to make comments, they'll get collected, I'm assuming, Betsy, you're just putting in the comments that you received them, then it stands to reason that the rest of the document, if people haven't commented on it, it should be reasonable and we can spend our time discussing the comments, if there's any concern about the comments. But I think we have other, a lot of other fish to fry, and since this is kind of process-related, it would be a good idea to review them all as a board, but perhaps we can rather kind of go through, you know, line by line, text, you know, edits. Let's assume that the, where people haven't commented, the thing is working, and let's focus on, does anybody have comments upon the comments?
And that's fine, if we only want to address the comments and the questions and the, yeah, we, if there's whole, if there's whole paragraphs that don't have any edits or comments, we don't necessarily need to go over them. But I know for myself, I have a lot of outstanding questions, so I think it's important for us to determine it as a board.
Are the comments coming into just specific sections, or are there some clean sections?
Yeah, there's some clean sections, but.
We're in the public hearing, is there one or two issues that you think are important for us to make decisions about that are right now? I mean, what is the example of?
An example?
Is there some we can laugh off right now, take?
So since it's not an iterative process, like, some of the things where there was Mass GL, Mass GL laws reference that it didn't seem to be the right law, so I had a question on those types of things. I'm proposing certain, you know, that we determine what an agenda looks like and we keep it that way, right? Like, we list out the correspondence, we have rolling topics at the end that we've discussed and say we'll get back to, and then we forget about it, right? So that, I think the select board has started to do this, you have topics at the end that stay on the agenda until it's done.
You don't need regulations to do that, though.
Well, it's good to have it in the regulations, I think. There was questions around how a planning board member recuses themselves, this draft is saying that it has to be through town council or, I forget the other, we have to submit a form, and in the past, we've just recused ourselves, self-recuse, right? So there's that question. It was saying we need to make notice to town, to town meeting on applications, I don't know what that means. I mean, there's just a lot of, like, stuff that, yes, I'm sending in my comments and edits, but then that goes and Betsy puts them in, but we haven't discussed it as a board. I'm not saying I'm right, you might put something in that I wouldn't agree with, right?
So that's to Laura's earlier point.
Yeah, so I think, yeah, all of that needs to get discussed.
So I have a suggestion, when we get to that point, we treat it the way town meeting does, where you, we go through, you say Section one and open a hole on whatever, and we'll just go through and see how many comments we have to, we have to work out. We can decide, it may be, may not be that hard.
Yeah, no, that's fine, I just, I, we, it hadn't been brought up that we were going to actually go over it, so I think that's important.
And the only other thing I want to say is that these are just regulations and they can be changed at any time after a public hearing, so it's not like we're going to town meeting.
Yes, but if we're saying we're rushed for time now, that we don't have time to talk about it at a meeting, we're not going to have it as a priority to change it if we're rushed for time.
But I do think we have this big special permit coming up, that we need to have this in place.
So then we should determine what the priority sections are then. You know, I think rushing through an eighty-page document doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Can we call out the sections, Betsy, that are pertaining to cell signaling?
Yeah, she has that in her memo, she identified.
There were, there's basically five sections that are kind of high priority.
Why don't we concentrate on those for next meeting?
See if we can get them.
Not saying we can do it all, I-
Laura's not going to be here, so.
I mean, I liked Chris's suggestion, you know, going through it quickly, putting a hole on anything that anybody wants to talk more about. So we know, rather than starting at the beginning and seeing when we get to the end, you know, five meetings later, let's go through it. I got a hole on this one, let's come back to it. I think that's a great process, gets us all talking about it as a board. And again, if we focus on the comments, which are maybe twenty percent of the document, if we've really been saying a lot, otherwise they're probably ten percent of the document, then the rest is just the standard boilerplate, so let's leave it alone, let's not text at it, let's be substantive. And I, and then I would say one more thing, which is, you know, if we say, for an example, we want to have an agenda. Yes, I think we should have an agenda, but I would say let's also leave it flexible enough so that each board can decide what the agenda requires and make those decisions together, but that it doesn't have to be in the regulation because a lot's to change to happen.
Well, I think that, yeah, that's a great point, right? Like, so it can be in here that we don't have an example of an agenda, but we say each time we vote a new chair in, we discuss how the agenda is going to be.
Sure.
Yeah, that's fine.
So those are the types of things that, yeah, a two-minute discussion and then we agree to that.
So continue to May eighth?
Yes, so I'm motion to continue.
So moved, continue the public hearing to seven o'clock?
Hopefully at maybe seven thirty.
Well, yeah, because we have to get on the select board meeting, select board.
I don't know when we'll be meeting with the select, or probably do that first. We do that between six thirty and seven, and then the public hearing.
You have to interview candidates?
Yeah, the interview is going to take longer than that.
Do you think?
Yeah. Because it's going to be four or five candidates. So why don't we say seven thirty?
Okay, but we still have the other one, the School Street one at seven already.
Right.
No, that's no longer a public hearing, I would just revoke the decision.
Public hearing. So then you can just work on the decision, okay.
Move to a-
Yep.
Continue the public hearing to seven thirty on May eighth, and second.
Yes, I can.
Or is anybody opposed? So. Okay, next item is the A and R One Windemere Park Extension. Ross is the applicant, should I, is the applicant here to present? And could you just introduce yourself?
Yes, good evening, for the record, John Moran from Moran Cameron Group, offices at sixty-six Elm Street in Danvers. We're here tonight representing the applicant, Darren and Johanna Ross, which their address is zero and one Windemere Extension, Windemere Park Extension, and Charles B Everett, twenty-ten Trust, Susan G Everett, one of the trustees at one thirty School Street. We're here for an A and R application, approval not required, plan for those three properties. Back in twenty thirteen, the Manchester by the Sea Planning Board issued a, or endorsed an A and R plan for the Ross's property at One Windemere, which was this property down here, subdividing it into lots one and two. There was an existing dwelling on Lot one, on Lot two, there was an existing garage that was to be raised. They haven't done anything with the property yet. Fast forward to now, they've been working with their abutter, which is the trust, Susan G Everett, over at one thirty School Street, and she has a six-point-six acre lot, which you can see right here, her front is on School Street. And they're proposing to subdivide her parcel into parcel A, which would then be conveyed to the Ross's, which would be added to one of their lots, which would create Lot two. And the lot on School Street would be, proposed Lot one. Currently, the lot on School Street has about six-point-six acres, that would be reduced to five-point-one acres, still well beyond the minimum lot area. Lot two would increase up to two-point-nine acres, which far exceeds the minimum lot area for that lot. And Lot three, which houses the existing structure, would still be twenty-one thousand plus or minus acres, which exceeds the minimum lot coverage for Lot three. One of the things we noticed when we were doing the A and R plan is- One of the things we noticed when we were doing the A&R plan is when that plan was created back in 2013, that subdivided the Ross's property into lots one and two, the frontage actually didn't meet the criteria in your zoning bylaw where you have to have the required depth for your required front setback. So one of the things that we're doing under this A&R application is we're correcting that. And we've created what's called parcel B. That actually gets conveyed over to what is now lot two, so that the frontage for lot two would now meet your zoning bylaw. Again, lots would meet the zoning criteria under the bylaw. As you can see, based on where the existing structures are, there's no impacts to setbacks from property lines for the existing structures. And we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any easements?
No easements proposed right now.
So their existing lot two is what is shown in this plan as just the resident, the residential B district portion of this, of the future. Is that correct?
Well, a portion of that lot, at some point, there was a parcel conveyed. So this was the A&R plan.
Oh, that's helpful.
That was approved back in 2013.
Okay.
At some point, you're 100% correct. The zoning line runs right down the property line.
Yep.
At some point, a parcel was carved off of the Everett lot next door, this piece, and it was conveyed over to the Ross's. So you do have a small portion that's in a residence A. We did discuss this with the building inspector and he felt that the plan as proposed does meet the zoning bylaw and he didn't see any issues with this.
So you're proposing, just to be clear, you're doing two things. One is the little triangle down on Windermere Park Extension, parcel B. And you're creating parcel A from lot one.
Correct.
And then you will join parcel A with the existing lot two, to make the existing lot two larger.
That's correct. And then parcel B will be conveyed over to the previous lot two, which is now proposed lot two, to fix the frontage issue out on that lot. Because on this plan, when lot two was created under this A&R application back in 2013, under your zoning bylaw, your frontage needs to meet your front setback to the, the minimum frontage required. And this lot had minimum 75 feet of frontage, but the 20-foot is actually up to this point. So this little triangle did not meet the zoning bylaw. So under this A&R, we corrected that.
So how does lot two have access? Do they have a driveway that runs?
Lot two, right now, the potential access could be through here. And that would be the access. And the existing driveway for lot three is right here. As with the previous A&R, that existing garage is shown to be raised because it doesn't meet the setback to the property lines once those lots are created.
But that lot has already been created.
But it's never been, like, they never wrote a new deed for this lot. So even though the A&R was created, you know, this A&R was created and recorded, the deeds haven't been written out yet to create those lots. So that's why the garage still exists.
So it seems to me that you have, sorry, that parcel B is not a problem and that carving off lot two, what is shown is lot two. It's not actually lot two.
Oh, it's parcel A.
From the six-acre lot one is also allowed because it's identified as not a building lot.
Yes, and correct.
And so I would say that this meets the requirements for an A&R. That said, when you join those two to make it lot two, then you're subject to the rules of District A. For, for a building permit. So then you'll have, that's a future state. But just your client should know that the, that the lot, that because the lot, I believe parcel A is larger than the existing lot two, right?
That's true.
Correct.
So then when those two become joined, more of their lot will be in lot, in District A than in District B. And therefore, the rules of District A will apply.
Yeah, we actually went and discussed that with the building inspector. And he agreed that the lot area would have to comply to District A.
So with the frontage.
Excuse me?
I believe the frontage would too.
Based on our discussions with him, he did not believe the frontage.
Well, this, I think that, that's a conversation that, that's not relevant here.
Exactly. I believe what you said originally, and I appreciate the input, because we will talk to the building inspector again.
There's a new, he needs to know that, there's a new, we will make sure he knows that there's a new provision and not recently adopted rules. But that's not relevant to the A&R, in my opinion.
Right. So right now, what the planning board is looking at is frontage and access.
I just ask a quick question. So 10.3.5.1G, just for verification, is this property on sewage?
Yes.
Thank you. This is the second time that this has come up. This property is in the Water Resource District and there are strange rules around this. I really would like town council's opinion on this. I mean, there's three specific sections. It says you can't do an A&R in this section, or it has to be this and that. I feel like it's really difficult to navigate this and I just want to make sure that we're approving something that we should be approving.
We can't deny an A&R though.
I mean, if you look at these.
But it's a state statute.
And it says in this water, I mean, our zoning bylaws say it.
But you're not making a zoning determination. You're making a determination whether this lot has frontage and whether it has access.
See, I understand that. But we have three sections that say things that are prohibited within the Water Resource District. And one of them is an A&R. So I mean, it's, it's in here a few times.
No, you can't do that.
So then we should take this out of our zoning bylaw.
Yeah, we should. So I'm innocent, just so you know.
So I think 10.3 is a priority zoning bylaw.
What does that mean? Means we need to, oh, to look at.
Yeah.
No, I think that's true.
I mean, it's prohibited use and A&R.
Which section are we, it doesn't say we can't do it.
It's 10.3.
So it mentions A&R. So that's why I asked the sewage seeping facility, that they have to be to be discipled. They are. Then it's in 10.3.5.2B. Now 10.5.3.
Assuming addition.
I mean, we can't deny an A&R on.
So I, I hear what people are saying, but this is the second time that this has come up. So I guess before we actually issue it, I would like just town council a letter saying that we should change this and this isn't applicable, so we don't come into this again. And then this should be on the list to get rid of it in the fall.
So if we don't act on this, it's going to be constructed.
It's going to be constructively granted. You have 21 days. It was filed on the 13th of April.
Well, they can extend it. And I mean, I'm concerned about doing something illegal here. I mean.
The section, I'm sorry, Christina, the section that says we can't do an A&R is what section?
10.3.5.3, additional prohibited uses in zone A, B, and C. You need a special, let's see, within zone two and zone three, A&R land divisions. You have to have 30,000 square feet, same thing that we just kind of talked about.
I can't imagine that's, I can't imagine that's legal.
Yeah, that just doesn't, it's not correct.
Well, we've spent five years looking at this document. So to just come up with this, you know, for the second time within the last six months, saying it's not correct, I mean, it should be a really big red flag with this document, to be honest with you. So all I'm asking is, because this is the second time this has come up, that we get some opinion from town council whether we need to change this and how we need to change it. Because if we're going to stay through this again, I don't want to say three times a charm. I mean, if it's in there, it's in there for a reason. And if it's illegal or whatever, I mean, we had someone look at this document, Mark Bobrowski, for years, and it never came up as not being correct. So I don't know why.
Well, this was adopted in 2002, this bylaw. And obviously.
Yeah, it should have been flagged.
We want to read bylaw though with him. Mark Bobrowski was here three years ago, way past 2002. So I'm not sure what that relevant comment was.
Well, you can either ask the applicant for an extension to like May 10th, which is, so the board's meeting on May 8th. And I'm sorry, I'm actually looking at Mark Bobrowski's version. And I don't know, I was, this predates me, but the approval not required as a, specifically, that section has been struck in his, that draft eight. So we did, and we never, we never acted on it.
And it came back in.
No, no, we, you know, we were doing, we, we took, we didn't even touch section 10. But just so you know, that that section in his recommendations was struck. So, so it was identified that, that you, it's, it's got a red light, it's got a, they cross out through it. So we never took up those changes because we prioritized other sections.
I'm fine with we approve this, but I still would like something current from town council.
I will, I will send it out tomorrow.
I have a question. I'm looking back at the A&R handbook. And I'm not sure if I'm referring to the right case. But one of the precedent cases, when you're creating kind of these hammerhead lots with a buildable lot that is landlocked, except for a long, skinny, you know, connection to something that gets you back to the public way. Would this fall under that category and? But it already exists.
Yeah, we're just making the lot bigger.
You're making the lot bigger. Okay, so the frontage exists. We're making it less long, less.
And we're not determining anything about the zoning.
No, exactly. The, the plan does have your standard note under the signature of the lot that you're not making any determination with regards to respect the zoning. Again, as the members have pointed out, you're really looking at frontage and access. And again, what this does is it fixes, fixes a frontage issue on a previous lot and then it just adds more area to one lot and slightly less area to another lot that far exceeds the minimum lot area.
But does not have frontage on its own.
Well, that's just, we're creating a non-buildable parcel, exactly.
And then joining it.
As pointed out, those two parcels are listed in and of themselves as non-buildable lots.
So the other question, just to your, we have a minimum lot width as a, as a, one of the provisions, dimensional requirements.
Sure.
So for a building, for, to one that meets zoning, that would be the, that, that neck of the, of the workshop.
Yep.
Would have to meet in, it is in District B right now as it stands. So it would, in order to put a house there, you'd have to have it be 60 feet wide as a minimum width. Once it gets joined to lot two, it's, would be my opinion that it has to be 125 feet, but that's for another day. Thank you. Yeah, Sue has a question.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to make sure I have the right number. So the new frontage amounts are?
The new frontage amounts, the front, one of the frontages is changed.
After you make this change.
So the frontages, the frontage on lot one still remains the same, which is pre-existing non-conforming at 50 and a half.
And that's on School Street?
Yep.
Okay.
And then the frontage for lot two remains the same at 75 feet. And the frontage for lot three remains the same at 83.98.
So I'll move that we endorse the A&R. Correct language about dates and notations and subject to the statement that this is not a determination of conformance to the zoning, the stated in the plan.
You need to reference the plan on the scale.
Yeah, let's see. The plan of land located Manchester-by-the-Sea, where Darren Ross and Johanna Stones Ross, One Windermere Park Extension, and the Charles B Everett, 2010 Trust, at 130 School Street, Manchester-by-the-Sea, dated 3/23/23 to scale 1 inches 40 feet.
Do we know what number it is, Betsy?
You don't need to do that anymore, I think.
It's not going to have a number. There's no requirement under Mass General law to put numbers on them.
Okay, but I guess we did before, so we could keep track of them. It's not a board decision. I mean, that's just someone that, I mean, just because it isn't, doesn't mean we.
Well, we need, we used to have an A&R number ahead of time.
If you want an A&R number, you can, we can put an A&R number on it. But there's no requirement under the law to put an A&R number on the plan.
There's, there's also no way to coordinate the A&Rs collectively. For instance, this A, this, there was a previous A&R and it will have a number totally different than this. However, if we move to file all A&Rs by street address, we will have that information readily available in one file. All town documents are filed by street address.
So I guess like, I'm not sure why this is like a change to our procedures without us knowing. I guess I'm a little taken back by this. So, I mean, it may be a memo saying like, what's changed? So we're not surprised in the middle of the meeting that something's, I mean, this is.
Well, it's come up before and.
I haven't heard about it before.
And we had one in the previous, we, Betsy determined that's not necessary, so she's.
I mean, I've worked in a number of communities. This is the only town I've ever known that has put an A&R number on.
We're not putting it on the plan. I think we're putting it on the, whatever. So I've been, it just would be nice to know if things are changing. I mean, I think we're due a courtesy with these things. I didn't hear that before.
Yeah, write your memo on it then.
I mean, I guess what else is changing?
Okay, so Chris, you made a motion. Is it, it's been seconded to approve?
Yes, I second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, Laura?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
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 Good. Thank you very much.
Okay, do you want to sign? Oh, do we have a pen to sign it?
Is there a MyLine here?
Yeah, there's one. I don't know if this is a pen with it.
Want to come back?
I have a pen, regular pen. It's to be the Sharpie. Oh, he's got five of them.
Oh, here we go.
I got one, two of them.
One should work. And then I have a super thick one that probably won't.
So we're all signing this? We're all here, we're all signed.
Why don't you start the paper copies down this end?
Can we just use the document that we just signed and decide you do it and just save time?
All these are on it?
There's two paper copies and there's a MyLine.
Here's the paper copy.
Where it says planning board?
Right there.
Ah, got it.
It's today.
Uh, the 24th.
Sign in the roster.
Okay, rock and roll. Okay, while those are being signed, Mark Losky, I see you're here. Do you have a comment? I'll just take something out of order. I'm a little bit on, I'm hanging around. Have a quick comment?
Hello. Thank you. Not this.
Yeah, I'll have to go black.
I'm going to be black for the registry. I'm going to be black for the registration.
I'm signing. You have to sign it.
Well, yes.
Oh, I'm talking.
We've worked on it.
So Mark Los, well, Mark Losky represents some of the people that Everett does, so that's probably, I guess.
Oh, that's why he's here?
I think so.
He signed the documents for, um, for Everett.
Um. Yeah, okay.
Um. Yeah, he's signed, Losky signed the A and R.
Oops. All right, so this is everybody, all right, you have your. Now, I think we take this to.
Now, usually we record it in, basically, usually we record it, we keep. Yeah, we keep, and what we'll do is once.
Gail?
We do not, the, the, the applicant takes the Mylar and records it and we keep the two paper copies, one for town clerk, one for me.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
And what we'll do is once the Mylar is recorded, we'll form a court of recorded copy.
Okay, great.
The plan is.
Early bird gets the.
Just have the pen here, um. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So last week we talked about thinking about our next line articles for discussion, um, to bring up for special fault town meeting. We passed over senior housing and the way the duties. The administrative bylaw was, um, not accepted by the select board, but the select board met, uh, last week. I, um, and I attended and, um, they gave a reason for their joint decision on, uh, basically on the selection of alternates. They wanted a role in that. I think I put Greg's, uh, comments into a packet. So, uh, my suggestion on this one in particular is that I think it's an easy, uh, walk for us to get, to bring on to, uh, the full town meeting. And I'd like to, um, have a discussion on the inclusion of the select board in voting on an alternate, on alternates. So we can get this, um, administrative selection on to town meeting. Comments on that, Mary Foles?
I was asked to look into, um, what other towns do. Sorry, I didn't send this out earlier. Um, so I just did an analysis based on, based on, um, size of community, which anybody could argue that's not a great way to do it, um, and that's fine, oh, here's something. Um, but basically, I went through the however many municipalities, we have three hundred and fifty-one or whatever, and said, okay, the population, whether or not they have associate, or sometimes they call them alternate planning board members, if they do, how many members are on their actual planning board. Well, first, how many alternate or associate members they have, how many members on their planning board, how they're appointed, and just out of interest, I put their form of government, but, so at the end of it, um, there were fifty-six municipalities that kind of fell into that population range. Thirty-three of those fifty-six did not have any associate members, eighteen had one associate and five had two associates. Um, of the twenty-three that had associate members, twenty were a, a five-member board and three had a seven-member board. And then you see the various ways of how they appointed, whether it's select board, planning board, um, together, or elected, or, um, sometimes elected or, and/or appointed as determined at town meeting. So I just found this interesting, I think, um, what I got from this is that mostly if they had five-member planning boards, they were more apt to have associates than if they had a seven. And that there's obviously different ways to appoint them, I think if we go this route, we're seven members, so we have to do two associates, is that correct, not we can do one? I know this is a push for self signaling, I, you know, personally still don't see a reason. I can't imagine two board members not being able to perform their elected duties for a permit, we've just never had that issue before, um, at least on my tenure. And I guess my only other comment, and then people can comment or not, is that, the select board's reasoning, um, it's kind of mixing apples and oranges, um, it's, they partner with the planning board to appoint members if there's a gap until the next election. And then a person gets elected. So it's a different scenario jointly appointing somebody for a three-year or two-year, whatever year term, as an associate member to vote on special permits, which is a big bulk of the reason why we're elected. So that was just my analysis and take it as you wish.
Thank you for doing that.
Good job.
This is one, well, thank you.
Good job.
Ask and you shall receive.
Okay, well, I'm just looking at this now, um, a lot of people don't have that.
I think that we have decided that we're going to at least advance associate members, and I don't think it's for self signaling, that's, that, that special permit will come before a November town meeting. So I don't think it's for a particular, um, I, I don't think it was ever for necessarily for a particular special permit. So I think we did decide that we were going to advance the idea of associate members and, and the debate was about how they were appointed. Um, at least in my, my opinion, and I do think that, um, you're, I, I guess I feel like I want the select board's support of the administrative section and if we, if, if joint appointment of associate members is what they feel strongly about and, um, then I think that, that kind of is borne out by, planning board alone is not, is, looks like it's one of your, um, or two of the towns you researched.
Well, and to be fair, I could have swayed it, right, because there's plenty of towns that just the planning board appoints them, but I started out doing, okay, we're gonna do it based on population, and so this is where the, the chips go, um, you know, if you, you know, there's plenty, and over, I, you know, the planning board appoints them, right, so it's, it's.
Yeah, so there's, there, you can do it anyway.
You can do it anyway, um, I guess my only last comment, and then I won't comment again, is that I do strongly feel as an elected planning board member, I would lean towards them being elected positions, I think when you start having, um, a joint select board, planning board, appointing permanent associate members to the planning board to do planning board work, that starts missing, mixing boards that are supposed to be autonomous, and that, I have a concern with that.
So, um, I guess my, my concern there is that it's a lot of work to run and it's a, it, you may never get called to, to serve and that what we get with being able to appoint people are people who are, who just never put themselves out to run and go through all of that. And we get some, we get sort of the, I don't know, the shy engineer or the, the, uh, you know, climate change expert or whatever. Somebody who has expertise that they, um, and, and, and somebody who doesn't come and talk about regulations and other things that, and, and just can kind of be an alternate juror, so to speak, for, um, special permits, particularly, you know, more complex special permits where I think what we, we owe it to the town to have a thorough review and to not end up in a situation where they're constructively approved because for some reason, two members or three members are, are, have conflicts or incapacitated or unable to attend the number of meetings that our regulations are gonna tell us we have to attend or whatever, so, um.
Technically, you'd have to have more than three members not being able to do it.
No, you need five people to approve a, a special permit with a seven-member board.
So we just, we just had this situation on the bird dump, you had Gary's resignation and Sarah's refusing herself.
Well, that was just that we needed all five to vote a certain way, that's what they can get down to.
Restrictive, kind of, but.
Well, but so had one person been traveling or some other thing, we had two members who could not participate, did, you know, had resigned and I could not participate, so, so one member had been ill or whatever, then it would have been constructively approved, it's not about the, so that's, I think that's the, it, it, it can happen and the town wants us to do a thorough review of special permits. And so, making sure that we are able to do that, not to get a certain outcome, but to give it a thorough review, seems to me why we have associate members and if that, if we get this, I personally think that the select board was way overstepping in their, uh, objection to the appointing, but nonetheless, they felt strongly.
So I served as an associate member of the zoning board several years back for a one-year term, and that's an appointed board, but, um, I sat in those meetings, I was, um, called on to listen, not so often called on to vote unless somebody couldn't be at a meeting, and then I subbed in, um, although I, you know, heard all of the discussions and so forth, and it was definitely for me, you know, introduction to town government, um, uh, trying out a year on the zoning board, was it the right fit or, you know, not exactly, but, you know, I felt useful. I, I, it was a one-year commitment, so that was manageable at that point, I would not have gone into a, you know, right out of the gate, two or three-year term in that case, and, um, I think it provided a value to the town in that you've got sort of a pinch hitter there who's getting educated about the board and brings their particular professional skill, whatever that might be. So, so I think an associate member is a great way to start, I'm fine with it being appointed for, for those reasons, because that person is always gonna be a minority on the board, just in terms of the numbers, right? So they're only gonna be asked to vote when we need a pinch hitter and when they are, they're not gonna make a, you know, they're gonna be one-fifth, but, um, or two-fifths at the most if for some reason no planning board. And as far as the select board, um, having a, a voice, I'm fine with that because I think we're trying hard across the town boards to be more collaborative and more coordinated, and we do want the select board's support generally of what we're doing, and if we have that support, it also, I think, uh, shows to, um, to citizens of the town that we're, you know, that we're working together and we're kind of all pulling in the same direction, and at least that we've talked about it, right? And there's, there's, um, a vote that, and, and still everybody gets to vote their individual, um, you know, preference, but then the board's, um, decision. So I am supportive of the select board being part of the process.
Christina?
Surprise, I don't feel the same, I mean, we are an elected independent board, the select board is an elected independent board. Yes, they do, we collaboratively appoint someone if someone resigns, but that person then needs to run again at the next election and they are elected. I feel strongly that this is not the same situation, this isn't someone resigning and they're gonna appoint them as interim until the next election, this is someone that's gonna be on the board for one, two, or three years and I don't feel if, as if we are truly independent if the select board is now holding up a zoning bylaw saying that if we don't have a voice on this appointment, we don't get, you're, we are the gatekeepers for the zoning bylaw, so I mean, that act alone to me is a red flag saying we're not independent, right? So if we are truly independent, then the select board really has no place to be, you know, appointing people to our independent board, and if they're holding this over our heads and saying we're not gonna let it go through, that's actually concerning, I feel like it's not working together, we're not gonna let this bylaw go through unless we have some part of this, you know, uh, alternate. So I am concerned about the optics of that and the logistics, I mean, we're not independent if the select board has a say on an alternate.
Uh, Greg, go ahead.
So, uh, uh, I agree with some of what Christina said, I think holding up the, the bylaw, uh, as ransom, I guess, for getting their participation was not a good look. On the other hand, uh, I think having more participation, uh, beyond the planning board for, uh, appointing associate members is probably a good thing, I, it's sort of a check and balance, I guess.
Yeah, but that's not how this is, so.
It's not the way it is, except that's the way it would end up, and that's, I think I'm being goal-oriented here.
So I'm, would be okay with maybe like a recommendation that they recommend someone and we have the final say, but this joint decision for an independent board, I feel like we are slowly losing our independence, I, I mean, to me, the MTA zoning, this, I feel like there is slowly but surely trying to chip away at our independence and I'm, I'm concerned about the independence of this board.
Uh, Greg, you have your hand up?
Uh, thanks, Ron, I just wanted to clarify that the select board is not saying, you know, if you, if you don't do it their way, they're not gonna put this forward to the, to the voters, they're just expressing.
They already did. They already did, right?
Let's not interrupt each other.
Thank you.
Excuse me, but that wasn't the sole reason why that wasn't advanced. So, um, again, I'm just telling you that their main rationale was that it's likely that an alternate is gonna be a prime candidate for a permanent position. And therefore, if the permanent positions are, until the next election are done jointly, it made sense to them to have alternates also appointed jointly, it's the same process, it's not usurping any more power in their mind. It was just consistent with how appointments are being made that aren't elected. So I just wanted to make that clarification.
Thanks, Greg, Betsy?
So I've worked for both elected and appointed boards. And what I've found over the years, I haven't done a survey on it, but what I've found is elected boards tend to have fewer to no associate members versus appointed boards tend to. What I view as an advantage to having associate members and it would be up to two in this community because you've got a seven, seven-member planning board, is that, it's a training ground for the next planning board member. And, um, when I was in Drakett, we had a seven-member appointed board and we had two associates. And, uh, so it was sometimes a big crew at the meeting. And, um, the, the two associates consistently wanted to learn and, um, they ended up sliding into positions when people left. So it's a great training ground, um, and it ended up working really well, um, in, in the situation with Drakett, it was, um, that person was appointed by the manager, um, as was the rest of the board, so it's a little different, but, um, it was definitely an advantage to, to have an associate member or two and however you figure out how to do that, I would encourage it. But I do not think an elected member, um, it's just too much work and it's, it's, it's too much work for kind of being an associate member.
So, I think this administrative section is really important, so, uh, is it, just throwing this idea, can we just take that section out and like vote on it separately? Because I don't want this section to get held up again based on this topic. I do think it's important, I think we might, I'm not sure if we're at an impasse or we're, it's gonna, you know, which way it's going to go, but in order to make sure this does go forward, the administrative section, maybe we need to separate the two.
Yes, ma'am, what?
Hi, as, as, my name is Sandy Goddard Turner, I live at eighty-nine School Street. And sitting here listening to the deliberations over the last several months, I, I would like to say. like to say, no offense, Christina, but this is a small town and I would hope that all the boards in town would work collaboratively and not each board in their silo guarding their independence, but would come together for the best interests of the town. So building something like that into the process of selecting an alternate would be something that I, as a citizen, would appreciate.
Great, thank you. Susan?
I don't want this to come off sounding like I'm just saying, "Oh, I agree with everything she said." You said Sandy. But the one thing that I was thinking as everyone was speaking is that I feel like the select board wants us to be successful because we are all working for the town. And so I don't feel like they're going to be obstructionist in us trying to get the right person appointed if they do have a say. I remember when we were beginning to discuss this before and when we voted on it, I may have even voted another way, but my opinion has changed a little bit. And I, I really agree with the whole collaboration and hope, maybe I'm being naive, but hoping that the select board does want us to be successful. So I, I support them having a role in it.
We would have both of them seven to five.
If we're all together.
When have we ever had a seven?
Well, we had some seven, yes.
So I think for tonight, we've had a good discussion about this and I think we're intending to bring this to a public hearing. And we can leave it as, I think we, we could vote whichever way we leave it in, hear more public comment and, and then it, we're, but I think we're, I think we are in agreement that we want to advance the administrative section at a November town meeting. And that the only, what I'm hearing is the disagreement is how, whether they're appointed, that those associate members will be appointed by whom, or how they would be seated. So I would say we, for tonight, say we're going to, I think we're in agreement to move it forward to a November town meeting. Let's put it on, get the public hearing for this and perhaps water, groundwater protection district remedies. And maybe one of, you know, some other things we can take up next time and in terms of what we would want to put on the November town meeting. But it seems to me we're, we, we do agree that we want to move forward with the administrative section.
So with that in mind, a good point, we did want to have an outreach public slash public hearing on the 12th of June. And I don't know if that's too soon or not, but that kind of is, is kind of the urgency we're under to move that forward. So it, it would be pretty, pretty soon that we would have that and be, and prepare for that. And.
Would that, is that date set in stone, Rod?
No, but that was kind of Betsy's schedule in one of the meetings.
I just, yeah.
I understand, I understand. We could move that.
No, that particular date, I don't know.
But I mean, I, not necessarily June 12th, but sometime early.
So that one, this one has had two public hearings. And the actual stat, you know, we're not doing major revisions except perhaps for this issue, right?
Absolutely.
So, so we could certainly, it seems to me that a public hearing in September for a town meeting in November meets all of the, we're not doing any, so that's just.
So we, I mean, to be fair, we changed other items in the administrative from what we currently have.
Right, but. Oh, yeah. But we've had two public hearings on the draft.
I thought you said that was the only thing we changed.
No, 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 sorry. On the draft, we have had two public hearings, so anyway.
Greg, do you still have your hands up or is that just resumed?
A second time if I may, Rod.
Yes.
Just, just so you're aware, there may be a need for a special town meeting in, in June. And so if, if there's an ability to move this, this section forward, I would encourage, urge you to do it sooner rather than later.
Well, that would be interesting. We think that would be less.
So to that, this is where I was concerned about the reworks of the actual zoning reclassification. I mean, if anything that should be done in June, it should be the draft and all these changes should be ready to go so we can get the changes if there is this emergency meeting. I mean, to me, that's the urgency what we should be working on right now. If that meeting happens, that document and all the changes should be ready to go. So when we do go in the fall, we have a clean document to work on.
I agree with that.
Does the board want to shoot for that then?
Sure, I'd shoot for it.
But just the administrative section?
Yes.
Yes, but I agree with Christina. We need to have the zoning document.
So.
I mean, because that's going to be replace this, replace that, do this, do that.
Oh, no, I'm not thinking that. I'm just saying.
Who is going to do that?
It's Betsy and.
Betsy, the town clerk and the town administrator, I thought.
All right, so you'll move that forward for June?
But that's.
Yeah, but we would need, we, we would need a public hearing in, sometime in May.
Are you, so you're finding errors that need to go to town meeting, like numbering and?
So the bulk of it is the cross-referencing is, you know, people, the end of the document cross-referenced old numbers. Nobody went in when the numbers changed. Nobody went in and said, "Okay, something went from eight point one to eleven point two." And all the other references in the bylaw never got changed.
So this has to be published prior to June, including the exception? The section has to be cleaned up?
Right.
Can that all be done?
I hope so. I am, I worked on it like close to 20 hours in the last five days. So.
That much?
Yeah, it's a mess. It's a mess. So, and it's.
With all those changes?
But the problem is.
Nobody did them. I submitted all the changes, nobody did them.
But see, nobody did them, but it's also since 2017. So I had to go back and kind of walk my way through all the changes and all the number changes.
You're going to be on the app for this.
Do we have that checklist of how many days? So this is a special town meeting. Do we know how many days before?
Sixty.
So do we have a tentative date that this special town meeting might be, that they're aiming for?
That's first I heard.
Greg brought it up before. I mean, it's based on Essex passing.
It's based on Essex May 1st vote. So they vote on May 1st. So whether they vote in the school funds or not. I think basically. And then we would have to go back to a town meeting.
I think it's 45 days. There's.
KP Law sent something out one time ago. I can't find it. It's checklist.
Should we vote the alternate thing through then?
What's the alternate?
Well, I can alter it.
Oh.
I think we have to have the, don't we have to have the public hearing first?
Yeah, you have to. That's a new, you have to.
So you have to have a public hearing for the bylaw.
Well, we've already had two public hearings.
Yeah, but they, they're, they've expired.
But they passed the day of the town meeting.
Oh, so yeah, so we have to have a public hearing.
Twenty-eight days.
Yeah.
So does Greg have an idea of dates? Can we ask Greg that, is he still here?
Greg, any thoughts on a date for the June town meeting? Is it late June, early June? No, any thoughts?
Yeah, there, there has been no discussion about a date, but we could certainly adjust to, to make things work as best as possible if we need to do that. I think there'd be a desire to hold it prior to school endings.
Okay.
Do we have that?
Yes, when does school end?
Probably, that'll, that'll, I don't know, middle.
Twenty-third or something like that.
What day? Third?
Twenty-third, something like that.
Twenty-third, yeah.
So basically 28 days is what we need.
So that'd be the middle of May.
Pretty close.
So we need to have then a hearing two weeks before, which we're getting close. So we can.
We gotta advertise. It's not going to happen.
No, that's not true. We can advertise.
Well, it's not true.
We can advertise, we could, if we have a date, we can advertise for the administrative changes to the section. We've already written that three times. And we could post the draft in its, the form.
So the draft should have the only.
Do you mean the administrative section or the changes?
By the, by the.
By the joint, should be a joint vote.
Right.
Should be in there.
If we could, we, if we put the, the associates to be voted by the select board and the planning board, then you can modify it to be one or the other. I mean, not going to probably.
Okay, so the warrant has to be made available 14 days before the special town meeting.
Right.
So, and that takes printing time, blah, blah, blah. So, so we would say, say June 1st.
Right, finalized.
It would have to be finalized.
Right.
The month.
That's right.
So you have, but all we're doing is the administrative section.
No, no, I'm saying the section.
She's saying do the zoning bylaws.
These changes that we're, they're wrong. Get these in one document and both them in. I mean, honestly, the administrative section, I would almost put the administrative section in without the alternates. Get that through if we need it. But these changes that we need for a new real document need, if we have this opportunity, get this thing done.
Yeah, you're right.
All right, let's see the scope of that.
No, we, you know, we have a good document to go forward with.
Laura?
So if, for that document where you're making cross-references, is there much substantive stuff to talk about in a public hearing or is it basically corrections?
Corrections mainly.
So if we have a public hearing, we might be able to not spend much time on that and also get input on the Section 12.
Right.
And then see if we want to take both of them. To, because it would be great to get Section 12 done and out of the way and then come back to the more, you know, the things that need more.
Right, and if it has to be renumbered, this and renumbered that.
Yeah, because I don't, you know, maybe people will care deeply about how you appoint associates or maybe they won't, but I don't think they'll care at all about discussing whether cross-reference 5.8 is now 8.2 or, you know, whatever. We just need to report that we're doing that.
Yeah.
Not spend time on it.
And in fact, that would give you time, we could generically say that's we're changing all the cross-references to make them accurate. And then you'd have until, what, the 8th of June to actually make the changes.
No.
No, I, you get into a mode to kind of do this, trust me.
Yeah.
Do you have time to do that stuff?
I'm doing it. I'm doing it.
Other things that are coming in? Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll explain.
All right. So let's have, let's move to, move the administrative sections forward to a meeting in June.
So I mean, there is work to do.
Yeah, to a, to a special town meeting if it occurs in June.
Yeah.
We will move that section forward.
I agree, but I guess to me, if it's going to take Betsy's time, the changes in getting a new complete document, in my opinion, are more important if we're going to have a special town meeting than administrative section. So I mean, if we're prioritizing time, if one's going to take more than the other, to me, the corrections are more important.
Yeah, I don't think Betsy needs to do.
We could move forward and pass over like we did.
Yeah, well, we're not even putting on the warrant. We're not going to do that.
We're just not putting.
I mean, right now, the existing zoning is about 85 to 90% okay. There are some paragraphs that are in the wrong spot and then there's this, the cross-referencing.
Does the cross-referencing need town meeting to address it or can it be, is it scribblers?
I'm not, I haven't totally finished it. I've got probably another day or two more, another half-day. And then I'm going to ship it to legal counsel and say, "Tell me, what does this need?"
So it may not be that we need significant town, town meeting. Obviously, if we're taking paragraphs out, we need town.
We're taking paragraphs out. I mean, the thing that we don't.
Well, it was a paragraph that was put in the wrong location, so.
But it does change the meaning of the bylaw.
Yeah.
So can I ask a question on that? So the, the new town map that we voted in is not in the latest zoning bylaw document. Where is it?
It's on the Patriot Properties. If you go to zone, if you pick the layer that says zoning, that's the map.
No, I understand that, but it, we adopted it as a zoning map.
I know, I sent it to Betsy so she has it to put in the book.
Because it's nowhere on our town website.
I couldn't find it today. I'm glad you brought that up.
You could or couldn't?
Could not.
No, no.
I will send it to Tiffany and tell her to put, tell her to put it up.
Yeah, it should at least be on the planning board webpage or something.
I can send it to Tiffany.
I have to sit down with Tiffany and go over the planning board webpage.
Maybe that also, you, I've sent it to you. I'll let you talk to her.
And put the maps on, put the floodplain references on and put a bunch of other things going on.
And get rid of the old stuff.
Yeah.
There was talk at this governance meeting about getting that website a little less confusing, all the websites on the town.
Yeah, it's hard to find things.
Yeah.
So I don't know what, what's coming of that, but.
I mean, I don't have access to the website, so.
I know, it's all different.
Yeah.
But we can clean it up and make it a little easier to navigate. It's really.
Boom, boom, boom. And, and also, I mean, a lot of other communities, if there's an application submitted, like a really big one, they'll put it on the website so that people, and then they'll update it so people can really look at it and understand what's going on.
When you say the website, just a general website or fix the planning board?
No, they'll put it on, like the planning board webpage.
Like the cell signaling application should be put up.
Current applications.
It's not just in the headlines, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
And I should say that this isn't the official submission, but, you know, for reference or something.
So from what I'm hearing is we want to make sure these changes are done priority first and then also add in the administrative changes for a possible June town meeting. Is that kind of what I'm.
And Betsy doesn't have to do anything on that, really.
Yeah.
It's drafted.
I mean, you could do the administrative in two, two versions with associate members and without associate members.
We can do that too.
And then go from there.
Well.
I don't think there were any other.
When you say with associate members, you mean, actually by the planning board, you know, or not, you know, we haven't called that out yet.
Right, right.
It's simpler to have one version.
Kind of like a third, right?
Yeah.
No, you just say with associate members that are appointed by, you know, planning board and board of selectmen or without associate members. Or maybe you put the third one in.
That's all right.
Right, okay.
Okay. So do we need to, do I need to, I don't think I need to vote on that.
Not right now.
I think we're all kind of in agreement. All right, there's two other things and I know it's late, but we've talked about senior housing, we've talked about ADUs, we've talked about a floodplain bylaw. These will all be September. No, these will all be in a quote, September, November timeframe. Any of these we want to talk about tonight to move forward or think they have some validity to move forward? I don't want to, my personal opinion is not to move the ADUs at this point because there's already a density issue with the 40A. I don't want to have, that, that's my personal thing. And then on the floodplain bylaw, I think that's valuable to do.
I would agree.
I don't know if that started yet.
Pull down some drafts and I can start in on that and I can send Betsy some drafts, bylaws, that would be a good starting point. I recommend with, along your ADU lines, is that we might put a hold on bylaws that increase housing and/or density and focus on the floodplain. I think we need to focus on the aquifer overlay district to protect our water supplies. I think we have to, I think there's some priorities that are, in light of the 40A and our water issues, need some addressing over ADUs and senior housing and whatever else. That's my opinion, that we need to get our floodplain in order, aquifer overlay district, administrative, make sure we have clean bylaws because then it's the 40A.
So just, just for the record, 40A is mass general law, so.
Then it's MBTA, sorry.
Yeah, it's just easier to say MBTA zoning because when you say 40A, it's like zoning, so.
Correct. So MBTA multiple.
Laura?
I'd be fine withholding on ADU. I'm not comfortable with a kind of umbrella statement about pausing on housing. I think you read every day in the paper about a housing crisis in Massachusetts and we know we have an aging population. So I think that we need to continue thinking about housing and deliberating on housing, zoning.
I absolutely agree and I have a feeling if we take Mary's tact, we're kind of weaponizing water protection as a way of stopping any kind of housing production here. water protection as a way of stopping any kind of housing production here. I think that's very dangerous.
Well, I, I don't, I don't think that's a fair statement. I mean, first, I would love to know where you, where that understanding comes from because our, our water, the aquifer overlay district would most likely be around gravelly ponds and I don't know a lot of housing going on over there, so.
So then why raise it as an, as an issue?
Because we're not protecting it.
Well, but you said that we should stop all housing projects.
Because everybody keeps saying how busy we are, so I'm saying we can't do five bylaws at once. If we have to pick the top three, that's my personal opinion, that we have a severe water issue that's gonna cost this town 10 million dollars.
Well, I don't think, see, I think that statement is misleading. We do not have a crisis in our water protection. And we have a water task force that's looking into it and telling us.
That's one of their recommendations. That's where I'm getting this from. We have a serious PFAS issue.
I have not heard. Well, that's nothing to do with housing production.
I didn't say anything about housing production.
Well, that means. She did.
No, I said we could only tackle some of the bylaws.
Let's not have more on ones. Any other comments on the, on the moving forward?
I have a question about the, um, there seems to be a timeline with the floodplain, so can we get that to make sure we're on track? Like, do we know what that is? Like, last time around, we're like, you had mentioned that there's no way we'd ever get this done. We have to go to the state and we have to do this. So can we get a timeline to make sure that we're on track with the floodplain for the fall?
Okay.
Do we know what it is? I heard that there's like timelines and submissions.
It has to go through two reviews, one at the state and one at the.
Do we know how long they're taking?
Um, I do not.
Okay.
Um, I do know that what Gloucester, yes.
Prior to.
What Gloucester adopted six months ago or so, it was a year and a half to two years in the making.
Well, that's what I'm saying, like, so it might be pie in the sky to aim for the fall. I mean, I would like to, but I mean, if we get this timeline and it doesn't make any sense, then you know, maybe we aim for next spring and we work on something else for the fall. I was just saying, let's maybe get that timeline re-yeah.
I think all the way along, there has to be an education process and there has to be an understanding. So, um, I think it just continues on and we continue to discuss it in the fall and we continue to discuss it in the spring if we're not able to get people to sign off on it. But my, my big concern is that if you don't have FEMA sign off on it, you may not have a floodplain.
But I don't feel like we're doing anything. We keep saying these things, but we're not doing something. So I guess like a checklist, I'm doing a lot.
I don't, we're not relaying it to us, so.
Betsy, one question with that, if I just, if I can, that there is a time crunch with, when the FEMA map, when these are adopted by FEMA and I think.
You have until the beginning of October.
Yeah, we have, we have to have the floodplain bylaw in place before, if we don't have the floodplain bylaw in place before FEMA maps are, what's the term, authorized or whatever, then there could be properties that aren't able to get insured. So I think there's, we have time, but I'm just saying there at that, and you would know the date better than I, but I think it's like a, a year or something like that.
So why don't we continue moving forward with the floodplain bylaw, even though we may not get it?
Yeah.
And then maybe we do in the fall, just throwing this out there, from what I'm hearing, is maybe we do do senior housing and the, that would be it.
So I think we need a timeline, a checklist.
Senior housing and maybe the aquifer bylaw.
Fix the wa, fix the watershed protection bylaw.
Yeah.
Right, and you guys were looking something else up? We voted you to subcommittee.
No, that was the, the, what we said we were gonna do, which we haven't done yet, which is the non-conforming use conversation with the ZBA, the building inspector and town council to understand what the heck is in our existing non-conforming use bylaw before we tackle it by bringing it to town meeting and not really understanding it.
That would not be, that would not be.
No, tabling it. So we haven't done that yet. We won't. It's on my list.
Okay, so.
Who has one other comment?
Any other?
It's 9:30. And I think we're starting to devolve a little bit. Could we wrap up with meeting minutes or whatever we need to approve and conclude the hearing?
Right.
Yeah, I'll, I mean, this, all right, I will, so from what I heard, if we're gonna watch forward with the flooding, floodplain.
Flooding.
With the floods, then we're gonna go ahead with the administrative and you're gonna clean up the. Okay, great. Planner's report, we all have, right? We've all read. Anything special that we haven't talked about? Any comments on the liaison committee coastal zone?
Uh, there's a meeting coming up, soon. It's just been scheduled. Harbor management, I think.
Harbor man.
There, uh, I think first meeting is Wednesday, although. And I learned that the intent is to actually hire a consultant who would do what I would describe, this is my worry. Bion told me it was a harbor management plan is what they're call it. But it seems to me it's more, from what I understand, is at least a existing conditions inventory of the harbor, at least as a first step, and then from that, goals and recommendations flow from that. So I think the first step is a hiring of a consultant and I assume he has a scope of work or something. So that's a little different than what I understood it to be, but kind of makes sense. And the coastal vulnerability assessment, next meeting is May 3rd at 9:00 AM. That's for the task force and there's another evening public meeting coming up soon. Those are posted on the website.
Okay, FEMA maps, floodplain, we talked about, rules and regulations, subcommittee. What's the, what are we gonna do with that subcommittee? You done? Devolved it? Ms. Feliciano?
I don't know why that's a question to me.
You're the, you're the leader.
I mean, I thought we were talking about this at the last meeting in detail. So I'm not.
No, there was, meetings were canceled and.
That was discussed at the meeting, that we were not gonna.
I was told it was canceled and nobody knew that that was gonna be canceled.
We discussed this as a complete board that we weren't going to hold the meeting. It wasn't a surprise. We actually discussed it in the meeting.
Hold that, but, okay, so are we still having the subcommittee?
We said that we were gonna keep the subcommittee, that the whole of board was going to give input and then the subcommittee would take, you know, certain sections as they came up, you know, in the future. I mean, that's what was discussed at our last meeting.
Ron, you had suggested that the subcommittee stay intact, that if we had in the future changes to rules and regulations, it would come through the subcommittee.
So the subcommittee is not going to meet until they get input from the board? Is that, is that kind of what you're telling them?
My understanding is we were going to, as a board, adopt this first draft and we would stay input to, you know, improve it in the future. And the minutes that everyone keeps asking, my understanding, I wrote them, but my understanding is we needed to meet in order to approve them, so I, we weren't meeting.
We guess we could have a five-minute meeting.
I mean, but I did put a draft in, so the agenda says other minutes, so if you guys looked at them, the two seconds that you did, then we could approve them. I mean, it's just bullet points that we talked about. It's nothing.
Okay, get those minutes in, because Gail's a little.
I just said that they are in. I think the agenda tonight allows us to vote on them. It says other minutes.
Probably should, I knew you'd just do it.
Yeah.
Okay, MBTA task force, that's, we talked about.
We talked about.
Water task, water resource task force. I attended the meeting last week. I sent, I, I put for your information the minutes of the meeting in the packet, so.
That's where I got my.
Hope you all read them. We talked about PFAS, they talked about they found some unaccountable water that was being used by the wastewater plant and they can change that out if they get some kind of system that uses the recycled water there and that would save us another 10% into our water. So there was some interesting, read the minutes. It's pretty interesting.
They need about three and a half million dollars to do repairs to the wastewater plant in order to do what they need to do.
It's worth it for our water.
Yeah.
So let's do it. Okay, um, CPC is meeting on Thursday. I'll have a report then. Approval of regular minutes, we have 3:13 and 3:27.
I move three, that we approve 3:13 and 3:27.
I'm sorry, I don't.
Any objections?
Um, I wasn't at the 3:13, so I could only vote for one.
Um, move to on 3:13.
Move that, yeah.
Second.
Any objection to 3:13 with Mary abstaining?
I wasn't there.
With Christina and Mary abstaining.
Wait, on 3:13, it says that you guys were. Are you thinking of the other one maybe?
Oh, wait, wait, yeah.
I think you are.
You are correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We were.
Which way were you? Where were you? 3:13, everybody votes on 3:13. Any objections to 3:13?
I see on 3:13.
20 right now.
Aye, we're in on 3:13. 3:27, Ms. Feliciano, Ms. Mar, Ms. Foley are not voting. Everyone else?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Okay, uh, other than, anybody have anything else they want to bring up?
So did you have a chance? Did you have a chance to look at them during the meeting or not?
Want to vote the subcommittee minutes?
We'll do that after here. We're gonna have to.
You'll do that privately?
Yeah, we can just do it right now.
No, I don't think we can.
Why not?
We have to be in a meeting.
No, we'll have a meeting. Oh, yeah.
We have to publish it. That's what I mean. We could do it now if you want to, or we could post the draft and we can officially vote on it to put something up.
Vote those minutes. Good vote. And just a reminder, it will be May 8th, will be a joint meeting.
Were they in tonight's meeting?
No.
What?
What is it?
No, it was in the.
No, I put it in our folder for tonight.
The meeting minutes, 3:15?
No.
There you go.
Let's just get a picture of this. Put it on the town, the town, his plan, what, they're all working together.
Collaboration.
Put that in the crypt.
Very funny, Ron.
If you heard, it's not here.
I.
I move A and B.
Thank you. Gail, May, um, March 15th.
Minutes approved. Gail, you got them. Move to adjourn?
Yes.
Anybody against adjourn?
No.
We're done.
Well, all right, bye.